... and an innocent little boy died along with additional students and staff injured. Our hearts hurt for the Perry School community, its leaders, staff, and students. Sadly, there is no one solution to address the challenge we face as a nation to keep our children and schools safe from gun violence. While school shootings are statistically rare, even one is unacceptable. We would like to share a few comments for our DMPS families, students, and staff. To our DMPS parents and families, we need your help. Please speak with your children about gun safety. Please normalize conversations about gun safety and take responsible actions that can prevent child gun deaths and injuries. We know that 76% of school shooters used firearms acquired from the homes of their parents or close relatives. Firearms are now the leading cause of death for children in the United States, and suicide is the second-leading cause of death for teenagers in Iowa. Eighty-two percent of all suicide victims used a gun that belonged to a family member. We will be making two resources available to DMPS families regarding safe storage of weapons: the Be Smart Safe Storage School Resource from Moms Demand Action and the Talk It Up Lock It Up Campaign by Polk County Department of Public Health. Please do everything in your power to keep guns out of the hands of our children. The issue does not need to be political, it is about being practical. The second thing we'd like to ask is that you please prioritize spending 30 minutes a day listening and talking with your child. Research underscores that 30 minutes a day can make a significant difference in the emotional well-being and academic success of a child. We know the demands of modern life are intense, the juggling act of work responsibilities, and the myriad of challenges we face as parents and caregivers. However, we employ you to carve out 30 minutes daily to connect with your child. Put away the technology, make eye contact, give them a hug, cook dinner, read a book, or just listen to them. If time is hard to come by, write them a note, or just show them you care in different ways. Please lay the foundation and provide the emotional security our kids need to navigate a very complex world. And remember, family can be broadly defined, and it comes in all shapes and sizes. What about an elderly neighbor, someone from your church community, a nonprofit that offers free after-school programming? There is someone out there who can help you love on your child. Now to our DMPS students, we need your help. Your well-being, your voice, and your actions matter profoundly in shaping our school culture and climate. First off, please ask for help. If you find yourself struggling, feeling overwhelmed, or in need of assistance, please know that it is okay to ask for help. Whether you confide in a trusted teacher, a counselor, a coach, a family member, or friend, please know that you are not alone. We also are asking our DMPS students to play an active role in supporting your peers' mental health. We are asking every student to be attentive to your classmates' well-being. Put your phone away and pay attention to your classmates. Take the time to genuinely connect. Is someone sitting alone in the cafeteria? Is a student exhibiting signs of distress? Is someone being teased or marginalized? Is someone's voice not being heard? Please be a force for positive change and support them. Our school culture and climate are not solely defined by policies, programs, or administrators; they are fundamentally shaped by your actions, attitudes, and interactions. And last, all DMPS staff, teachers, principals, and administrators within our school community, we thank you. The recent events include involving Perry have undoubtedly resonated deeply within each of you, eliciting a profound sense of empathy, concern, and reflection. As DMPS staff, your commitment to the well-being and safety of our students is unwavering, and I have no doubt that many of you would demonstrate unparalleled courage and dedication, much like the Perry Principle, in shielding and protecting our students. You are responsible for creating an environment where students feel safe, heard, supported, and lay the foundation for their academic success and personal growth. We understand the weight and pressure of that role weighing on your shoulders. We offer our deepest gratitude and admiration to each educator, principal, and staff member for your unwavering dedication, resilience, and commitment to our students' well-being. To our whole community, we take the safety and security of the DMPS family very seriously. Later this evening, we will be receiving a presentation on the efforts DMPS is taking to keep our students and staff safe in our schools. Now I'm going to turn to Ms. Alonzo Diaz, who will share the same statement in Spanish.
La última vez que nos reunimos como junta, la mayoría de la gente en el país nunca había oído hablar de Perry, Iowa. Lamentablemente, ese ya no es el caso. Perry se ha convertido en otra estadística de tiroteos en las escuelas. Estos trágicos acontecimientos se están volviendo muy comunes y arrojan una sombra de miedo e incertidumbre para los padres, los estudiantes, y el personal. Como se informó en las noticias, un estudiante con dificultades que no vio otro camino a seguir decidió dañar a otros, quitarse la vida en la escuela. Un director increíble y un niño inocente murieron junto con otros estudiantes de personal heridos. Nos duele el corazón por la comunidad escolar de Perry, sus líderes, personal, y estudiantes. Lamentablemente, no existe una solución única para abordar el desafío que enfrentamos como nación de mantener a nuestros niños y escuelas a salvo de la violencia armada. Si bien los tiroteos en las escuelas son estadísticamente raros, incluso uno es inaceptable. Nos gustaría compartir algunos comentarios para nuestras familias, estudiantes, y personal de DMPS. A nuestros padres y familias de DMPS, necesitamos de su ayuda. Por favor, hable con sus hijos sobre la seguridad con las armas. Normalice las conversaciones sobre la seguridad de las armas y tome medidas responsables que puedan prevenir las muertes y lesiones infantiles por armas de fuego. Sabemos que el 76% de los tiradores escolares utilizaron armas de fuego adquiridas en los hogares de sus padres o parientes cercanos. Las armas de fuego son ahora la principal causa de muerte de niños en los Estados Unidos. Y el suicidio es la segunda causa de muerte entre los adolescentes en Iowa. El 82% de todas las víctimas de suicidio utilizaron un arma que pertenecía a un miembro de la familia. Pondremos dos recursos a disposición de las familias de DMPS: sobre el almacenamiento seguro de armas, el recurso escolar (Be Smart Safe Storage) de Moms Demand Action, y la campaña Talk It Up Lock It Up del Departamento de Salud Pública del Condado de Polk. Por favor, haga todo lo que esté a su alcance para mantener las armas fuera del alcance de nuestros niños. Esta cuestión no tiene que ser política, se trata de ser práctico. Priorice dedicar 30 minutos al día a escuchar y hablar con su hijo. Las investigaciones subrayan que 30 minutos al día pueden marcar una diferencia significativa en el bienestar emocional y el éxito académico de un niño. Sabemos que las exigencias de la vida moderna son intensas, el acto de hacer malabarismos entre las responsabilidades laborales y la gran cantidad de desafíos que enfrentamos como padres y cuidadores. Sin embargo, le imploramos que dedique 30 minutos diarios a conectarse con su hijo. Guarde la tecnología, haga contacto visual, abrácelos. Cocinen la cena juntos, lean un libro, o simplemente escúchelos. Si le resulta difícil encontrar el tiempo, escríbales una nota o demuestreles que se preocupa de diversas maneras. Por favor, sienten las bases y brinde la seguridad emocional que necesitan para navegar por el mundo con confianza, resiliencia, y compasión. Y recuerde, la familia se puede definir de maneras amplias y viene en todas las formas y tamaños. ¿Qué pasa con un vecino anciano, alguien de la comunidad de su iglesia, una organización sin fines de lucro que ofrece programación extraescolar gratuita? Hay alguien por ahí que puede ayudar a amar a su hijo. A nuestros estudiantes de DMPS, necesitamos de su ayuda. Su bienestar, su voz, y sus acciones son profundamente importantes a la hora de dar forma a nuestra cultura y clima escolar. Por favor, pidan ayuda. Si tienes dificultades, te sientes abrumado, o necesitas ayuda, queremos que sepas que está bien pedir ayuda. Ya sea que confíen en maestros, en un consejero, entrenador, familiar, o amigo de confianza, queremos que sepas que no estás solo. Desempeña un papel activo en el apoyo a la salud mental de tus compañeros. Pedimos a todos los estudiantes que estén atentos al bienestar de sus compañeros. Guarda tu teléfono y presta atención a tus compañeros. Tómate el tiempo para conectarse genuinamente. ¿Hay alguien sentado en la cafetería solo? ¿Un estudiante muestra signos de angustia? ¿Alguien está siendo objeto de burlas o marginado? ¿No se escucha la voz de alguien? Sea una fuerza para el cambio positivo y apóyalos. Nuestra cultura y clima escolar no está definido únicamente por políticas, programas, o administradores; está fundamentalmente moldeado por sus acciones, actitudes, e interacciones. A todo el personal, maestros, directores, y administradores de DMPS dentro de nuestra comunidad escolar, les agradecemos. Sin duda, los recientes acontecimientos que involucraron a Perry han resonado profundamente en cada uno de ustedes, provocando un profundo sentido de empatía, preocupación, y reflexión. Como personal de DMPS, su compromiso con el bienestar y la seguridad de nuestros estudiantes es inquebrantable, y no tengo ninguna duda que muchos de ustedes demostrarían valentía y dedicación incomparables, al igual que el director de Perry al proteger a sus estudiantes. Usted es responsable de crear un ambiente donde los estudiantes se sienten seguros, escuchados, y apoyados, sentando las bases para su éxito académico y crecimiento personal. Entendemos el peso y la presión de ese papel que pesa sobre sus hombros. Ofrecemos nuestra más profunda gratitud y admiración a cada educador, director, y miembro del personal por su inquebrantable dedicación, resiliencia, y compromiso con el bienestar de nuestros estudiantes. Más tarde esta noche recibiremos una presentación sobre los esfuerzos que está realizando DMPS para mantener a nuestros estudiantes y personal seguros en nuestras escuelas. Gracias.
Thank you, Maria. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Dix, so moved.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Alonzo. Board members, please cast your vote. Ms. Caldwell Johnson?
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved, 7-0. The next item on our agenda is district recognitions. Superintendent Roberts, would you please present?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. As we continue to bring forth each of our school board meetings, celebrations of the successes and accomplishments of our students, and certainly the adults who serve them. And this evening, I would like to recognize on behalf of the Executive Cabinet, two groups of teammates. The first group clearly cannot be here with us this evening because it is likely that they are currently out either shoveling snow or clearing ice to make sure that all of our school entrances and parking lots are ready to receive our adults as they engage in professional development on tomorrow. Of course, winter came in a very mild way for us this year. So the team that we have in place, who are part of snow removal and operations, we just have tremendous gratitude for the work that they have done and continue to do, as each of them have awakened during the hours of the morning to make sure that this work gets started and gets completed. Second group that I certainly want to make sure that we acknowledge and recognize is our Metro Kids staff. During last week when we had to make very, very quick game time decisions around school closures because of inclement weather, the one group of individuals who remained open for an extended period of time because we recognized the value and importance of ensuring that our parents had apt to care are the staff and faculty of our Metro Kids. Tremendous gratitude to them. Many members of the cabinet had an opportunity to visit with them during those times. And while everyone else was rushing home or to the supermarket to make sure that they were winter-ready, our Metro Kids staff and faculty were there with smiles on their faces, ensuring that students were having a good time in a safe environment. So we want to say thank you on behalf of the Executive Cabinet. Madam Chair, that concludes this evening's district's recognition.
Thank you. I think we're all curious how you're faring this winter as well, your first winter in Iowa. Okay, next on the agenda is the public forum, followed by the consent and regular agenda. We provide speakers at the forum an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the board agenda. We also allow any person the opportunity to speak to the board for up to five minutes following the presentation of an agenda item. If anyone wishes to speak during any portion of the business meeting, please email rosa.rios@dschools.org. The same speaking protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. Speakers will be called individually, and we ask they state their name and their address prior to providing comments. Students and minors do not have to provide their addresses. Guests of the board are encouraged to speak to matters relating to the programs, services, and operations of DMPS. Please remember that Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We ask all speakers to avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. The use of inappropriate language will not be tolerated, and individuals choosing to do so will be gavelled out of order and asked to excuse themselves from the premises or escorted out by district security. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in a discussion with public forum speakers as it is our obligation to discuss only matters posted in the public agenda for the sake of transparency and opportunity afforded to all community stakeholders. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or board follow-up at a time after the meeting. Thanks for your participation, we appreciate your feedback and input. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers for the public forum?
Yes, we do. First up, I'd like to call Hannah Hayes.
You may approach the podium.
Good evening, my name is Hannah Hayes, and I'm a senior at Roosevelt High School where I'm co-president of the Environmental Club. I'm here today to encourage you all to pass a Green New Deal for Des Moines Public Schools resolution. We recently emailed you all a Green New Deal resolution that we hope you will sign off on. In case you haven't had a chance to read it, the resolution has five pillars: updated infrastructure for our schools, healthy lunches, pathways to green jobs, and creating climate adaptation plans and curriculums. It has the support of the hundreds of students who signed our petition, which is attached to the resolution. The resolution makes clear the risks of climate change and the solutions to this crisis. It starts by declaring a Green New Deal for schools resolution for DMPS. Specifically, the Green New Deal for schools would require schools to have disaster relief programs and plans. This would have helped mitigate the harms of the derecho had it happened during the school year, as well as how to handle when schools canceled on the second day of school because of a lack of air conditioning and buses and extreme heat. It would also help to have an action plan in place in times like these when snow and extreme cold temperatures blanket our city. Weather events like these are just going to become more severe and frequent, and we need plans to deal with them. This will all be made possible through funding provided by the Inflation Reduction Act and the Green New Deal for schools. However, we must take the opportunity now and prioritize applying for and accessing this funding. Similarly, applications for funding for electric bus rebates end on January 31st, we must take action now to get access to these funds. Additionally, Roosevelt Environmental Club also recently attended the city council meeting where they passed the Climate Adaption Plan, which seeks to reach net zero emissions by 2050. DMPS should work in tandem with the city to accomplish this vital goal. I was introduced to the Green New Deal for schools earlier this year when I went to Washington DC with the Sunrise Movement and hundreds of other youth organizers to attend the reintroduction of the Green New Deal for schools in Congress. It was an empowering experience that showed me youth around the country want climate action, and this fact was reinforced when students in Boulder successfully had their school board pass a Green New Deal for schools resolution. School boards across the nation pass resolutions regularly. I understand that DMPS has yet to pass one, but there's always a first for everything. Simply passing this one doesn't have to open the floodgates to others because you still have the ability to look at each resolution based on its own merits. Looking at the merits of the Green New Deal for schools resolution, it's clear the plan has only positive benefits for students and their families.
Thirty seconds remaining.
If you decide against passing this resolution simply because it's a resolution which you haven't passed before, then I would ask that the bare minimum DMPS accelerates its applications to and possession of solar panels and electric buses because the window of opportunity to apply for this funding is closing. I urge you to take action now and sign off on the Green New Deal for schools resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kathleen Loder.
Good evening, members of the school board, educators, and fellow community members. My name is Kathleen Loder, I'm a senior at Roosevelt High School and the other co-president of Roosevelt's Environmental Club. I'm honored to stand before you today to discuss a matter of the utmost importance: the integration of climate education in our schools, particularly in context of the Green New Deal for schools. As we navigate the challenges of the 21st century, it is undeniable that we face a pressing issue that affects all of us: climate change. Students are not just the leaders of tomorrow, we are also the ones who will inherit the consequences of decisions made today. This is why the Green New Deal for schools is not just a policy initiative, it is an investment in our future generations and our planet. The urgency of climate education cannot be overstated. We find ourselves at a critical juncture where the decisions we make today will profoundly impact the world us students inherit. By incorporating climate education into our curriculum, we are equipping students with the knowledge and skills needed to navigate an ever-changing world. Climate education is not just about understanding the science behind climate change, it's about instilling a sense of global citizenship, teaching students that their actions matter on a global scale. As caretakers of our planet, students hold the key to making significant contributions in tackling environmental challenges. Integrating climate education aligns seamlessly with the broader goals of the Green New Deal. It's not merely an addition to the curriculum, it's an investment in the mindset and values that will shape our community's future. By fostering a deep understanding of sustainability, we prepare students to embrace the green and sustainable practices championed by the Green New Deal. In conclusion, I urge the school board to consider the profound impact that climate education can have on our students and our community. Let us be at the forefront of change, paving the way for a generation that not only understands the challenges of climate change, but actively contributes to its solutions. I implore you to support the integration of the Green New Deal for schools, especially due to the importance of climate education in our schools. Thank you for your time and consideration, together we can create a sustainable future for students and generations to come. Thank you.
My name is Sam Harrington, and I am a sophomore at Roosevelt High School, and I am a member of our Environmental Club. Today I stand before you to advocate for an initiative that not only tackles the pressing issue of climate change, but also presents an incredible opportunity for job creation: the Green New Deal. The urgency of the climate crisis cannot be overstated. The impacts of climate change are already being felt across the globe, from extreme weather events to rising sea levels. As young people, we are deeply concerned about the world we will inherit, and we believe that taking bold action is necessary to secure a sustainable future. The Green New Deal recognizes the potential of climate jobs to drive economic growth while simultaneously reducing greenhouse gas emissions. By investing in renewable energy sources such as solar and wind power, we can create a thriving industry that provides stable employment opportunities for our community. These jobs will not only support individuals and families, but also contribute to the overall well-being of our society. Moreover, climate jobs can help address the economic disparities that persist in our society. By prioritizing the creation of well-paying union jobs, the Green New Deal ensures that the benefits of this transition are accessible to all, regardless of background or socioeconomic status. This will help bridge the gap between the have and have-nots fostering a more equitable society for everyone. The Green New Deal also recognizes the need for sustainable infrastructure. By investing in energy-efficient buildings, public transportation, and clean water systems, we can create jobs in construction, engineering, and other related fields. These investments will not only reduce our carbon footprint, but also improve the quality of life for communities across Des Moines. The benefits are not confined to environmental stewardship alone. As industries evolve towards sustainability, our students equipped with the right skills become pioneers for a new era. This isn't just education, it's an investment in our community and economic future. The Green New Deal for schools is not just a policy proposal, it is a vision for better future. It recognizes the interconnectedness of our environmental, economic, and social challenges and presents a comprehensive plan to address them. By embracing the Green New Deal, we can not only combat climate change, but also create a more prosperous and equitable society for all. In closing, I urge the school board to recognize the immense potential of the Green New Deal and support the initiatives that prioritize its implementation. By investing in renewable energy, sustainable infrastructure, and other climate-friendly sectors, we can create a greener and more prosperous future. Together, we can build a sustainable and just world for ourselves and generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Hannah Butts.
Hi. Hello, my name is Hannah Butts, and I'm a freshman at Roosevelt High School. I'm here to urge you to pass a Green New Deal for the Des Moines Public School District. Though there are many parts of the deal, I'm here to speak to you about improving school infrastructure. For example, the Des Moines Public School District could begin using hybrid or electric buses to transport students and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Or, schools could begin installing solar panels into school buildings. This would create another clean energy source, and it could provide an opportunity to teach students about solar panels and maintaining them, creating pathways for clean energy careers. I ask you to do this because, as a student of the Des Moines Public School District, I feel that we are not doing enough to combat the climate change. I want to be able to look around my school environment and know that the people in charge of my education are choosing to do something about the climate crisis. We are here, and we have an opportunity to change our city, our state, and eventually the world for the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kristen Vogel.
Hi, my name is Kristen Vogel, I live at 13042 Sunset Terrace in Clive, and I teach 6th grade at Merrill Middle School. I myself am a proud DMPS and Roosevelt graduate, and after teaching in Cedar Rapids for five years, I returned to the district of my childhood and have been here as a teacher for 15 years. When I moved back, I only applied in this district, though many other options were available because it has always felt like home. I have made a conscious choice to stay every year since. I stand before you today not just as an educator, but someone deeply committed to the success and well-being of our students, our families, and the entire educational community within our district. Over the years, I have witnessed the ebb and flow of colleagues in our schools, and it's with a sense of urgency that I address you to advocate for an increase in staff pay beyond the usual 3% that has been provided for the past five years in order to stop the number of educators leaving our schools. Each year, talented and dedicated teachers make the decision to seek employment in our districts or leave the profession altogether. While this may be a natural part of the educational landscape, the frequency of this occurrence is currently alarming. occurrence is currently alarming. In fact, we have lost over 500 teachers in the past two years alone in DMPS. As someone who is determined to stay and contribute to the growth of our community and our students, I cannot ignore the impact that high teacher turnover has had on our day-to-day operations. Student achievement is undeniably affected when there is a lack of continuity in teaching staff due to our turnover and vacancies. Students thrive when they form lasting connections with educators in their buildings, and a revolving door of teachers disrupts this bond and feeling of community. As we discuss the issue at hand, it is crucial to recognize that addressing teacher turnover is not solely about retaining educators for the sake of retention, it's about creating an environment that makes it worthwhile for our talented teachers to stay, to invest their time, energy, and passion in the growth of our students. Competitive teacher salaries are not just a matter of fairness, they are an investment in the stability and success of our educational institutions. Adequate compensation serves as a powerful incentive for experienced skilled teachers to remain in our district, bringing with them not only expertise, but a deep understanding of the unique needs and nuances of our community. In conclusion, I urge the school board to consider the profound impact that higher teacher pay can have on the longevity of our educators and by extension, the success of our students. Competitive pay creates an environment where our teachers feel valued, supported, and motivated to continue to work in shaping the future, our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Feeney.
Do I do anything with that?
Nope, you can just speak into it.
My name is Kathleen Feeney. I live at 521 A Street, 50265. I am a teacher at the downtown school, but before I make a request with all of you, I want to give you a little bit about my background. I was, I've been teaching since 1985. I came out here from Arizona. I have an undergraduate degree in American history, post-bac in elementary education. I manage my own nonprofit training dogs for schools with the intention of addressing trauma and violence. I personally own two therapy dogs that supported the students the day of the shooting in Perry, and I recently trained and adopted out another DMPS staff member, a dog at Focus. I initially tried to give it to Dr. Roberts, it didn't go. But I look forward to completing that dog certification there as well, as I continue to train two new dogs I've been given from the Animal Rescue League. I also work passionately as a volunteer with the National Council on Alcoholism, addressing addiction and trauma in families. I'm a volunteer with Paws and Claws, O My Dog Rescue, member of the NEA, DMEA, and currently my school's elected DMEA rep as well, the downtown school's SEAL lead. I'm also the proud daughter of a Marine. But I'm not here to continue with all of this tonight to talk about my personal contributions. I'm here to remind you that I am one of the many teachers who hold equally remarkable and most likely even more impressive resume profiles than me. I'm here to encourage you to remember the vast wealth of talent that you already have in your schools, and to convince, or to ask you to convince us, this talent, to stay here in the profession. Teachers are now on the front line. We go to work with thoughts that I'd never once had as a new teacher. I face things like, will my students be next? Or will I be next? Those are thoughts that were once unimaginable in my earlier years as a teacher. Tonight, I'm asking you to convince us, and to convince me to keep teaching, to continue to contribute our endless talents by paying us for our inspiring gifts we bring beyond our in-service and our degrees. Convince your talents, and convince me, all of us that have trudged through hardships with immeasurable pain and success, that you see us, that you value us, that you're willing to recruit and keep us. There are many teachers like me here tonight, and across the district, that need your support and proof that you value us. I'm asking you to not let this talent leave DMPS. While I understand you can do very little to change the budget that's been given to you by the state, please don't use that as an excuse or rationale. Like any business or family, when funds need to be reallocated to make difficult and to have the greatest impact, tough decisions have to be made. So I'm asking you again to make those tough decisions on behalf of the teachers and the deep talents you have, to keep us here in your schools, and to recruit future great teachers. Please offer us a salary that at least matches our, matches our neighboring districts and is beyond the typical 3%. I'm asking you to convince us to stay, and that you see us and value our contributions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Kathleen Sharon.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Sharon. I live at 4102 High Street, West Des Moines. I have been a teacher for Des Moines since 2004. I have never in my past thought about leaving Des Moines until last year. I actually, in this building, decided to be a teacher. I was here as a student from East High School. I was in marine biology, and I learned that that wasn't for me, and my teachers actually convinced me to go into education. So when I graduated, I returned to Des Moines, and I subbed for a year, and then I taught, and I've continued. As I said, I live in West Des Moines. I was offered jobs right then when I moved. I said, no, I'll drive, there's, there's a need here. And, over the years, I have witnessed so many of my friends and family that were teachers, that we worked together as, we were not just coworkers, we were people who went camping during the summer together. We, and they have all left Des Moines because of either the needs or the pay. And often, you know, I've said, oh, and insurance, it's great for your family, there's that great benefit, and I try to convince people to stay, and they're like, I can go there and I can make this much, and I have these benefits, and I have a smaller classroom, or I have a bigger budget, the needs aren't as great, so they move on. But, when I look at our classrooms for early childhood, because I'm a preschool teacher at Woodlawn, there's a need for more teachers. In the next few years, there are going to be more funding for more preschool classrooms. And we were not able to fill all of our positions this year. Last year, in the fall of 22, the day before I was supposed to start work, my classroom was already set up, I had everything ready, I was ready for parents, I got the call that said, you need to move classrooms, we couldn't fill a position, we need to move you. And so I started again, all over, in a new classroom, new staff that I was working with, exhausted the first two months of school because I was going through everything in the room, and had to endure that. And so then last year, I met with my principal and I said, if I have to do this again, I think I might need to leave, this might be the end. And so thankfully, she was able to move me back with my team, and we moved back to our classroom, and this year's been great. But, I'm still looking at those empty positions that we have, or that we're pulling coaches, and they're filling in, and then we don't have a coach, and then we don't have the support there.
Thirty seconds remaining.
So I'm just asking you to look at your budget, I know it's not an easy decision, but to think about, how can we retain these teachers, and how can we encourage more high-quality teachers to apply? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Eggerman.
I'm not here to talk about teachers, which is wonderful, I was one. My name is Adam Eggerman. I'm 2925 Rutland Avenue, 50311. I'm here to talk about Montessori, and I was told I have five minutes, I'll try to do it in three. And, if you have not had a chance to observe in a Montessori classroom, at Kohl's, I used to teach at Kohl's, I taught there for 18 years. I have taught in Montessori for 30 years, both public and private. If you've not had a chance to observe, and not just a school tour, but actually sitting in a classroom for about 20 to 30 minutes, I highly recommend that you do it. And if you need any context, I know some teachers, so feel free to reach out to me, I have business cards. So, this material is introduced at the 3- to 6-year-olds. And, a Montessori classroom is like organized chaos. It is three-year age span in a room, and not all kids are doing the same thing at the same time. And so it looks like, what is going on? And so it takes some time to actually sit in there and observe what the children are doing, observing how the teacher interacts with the kids, how the teachers prepare the environment for the kids. This material, the pink tower, is made of 10 cubes that build on each other. The largest cube, down here, is 10 centimeters by 10 centimeters by 10 centimeters. The smallest cube, 1 centimeter by 1 centimeter by 1 centimeter. Each cube is a difference of 1 centimeter to the next. It is painted a beautiful pink color. Dr. Montessori did a lot of experimenting with this material in the classroom to come up with this final design. However, the use of the color pink isn't completely documented to why she chose that On the surface, it looks like you just stack it, one on top of the other, but there is so much more to it. Montessori materials go through a rigorous vetting process before being added to the classroom. They have both direct and indirect learning opportunities. When a child of 3 to 6 interacts with this material, they are building coordination, concentration, independence, and order. They are working on building their prehensile writing skills. They are learning to discriminate size and shape. A child will carry one cube at a time from the shelf to their work area, and they hold a reverence for the materials in the classroom and treat them with care. When they are done engaging with them, they will return them one by one to the shelf. And, they are not just placing them haphazardly on the shelf, but in order from largest to smallest, and now it's ready for the next person to use. What's amazing about this material, it's its simplicity, preparing the child for learning about decimals. There are 10 cubes building off of each other by 1 centimeter difference. It is so incredible to think that also, that this material, that a Montessori child is interacting with, at the age of 3, 4, and 5 years old, is indirectly preparing them for advanced study of mathematics in cubing, volume, and mass. February 25th to March 2nd is International Montessori Education Week, and I encourage you to visit a classroom and learn how you can support Montessori methodology in our public school system. It is 30 years that Montessori has been a part of Des Moines Public Schools. This is the 30th year of it.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you. I'll finish with a quote from Dr. Montessori. Movement of the hand is essential. Little children reveal that the development of the mind is stimulated by the movement of the hands. The hand is the instrument of the intelligence. The child needs to manipulate objects and to gain experience by touching and handling. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rob Marino. Rob Marino?
Usually that happens with a tiny one.
Rob Marino? You can't approach the podium.
I'm Rob Marinero. I live at 934 Davis Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa. The halls of Lincoln High School have been overflowing into our Kirkwood Heights neighborhood for the past few years now, and the citizenship continues to worsen. We ended 2022 with possibly the first homicide at McCray Park since I lived in the neighborhood in the early 70s. 2324 has allowed students more free time to roam throughout the neighborhood, in the parks now, for hours each day, and with that homicide, let me attribute that, that was attributed to a drug deal gone bad with a Lincoln High School student. As a class of 1990 Lincoln graduate, I never had an open extra period or two to spend outside and hang out at the park for two hours. My contact from Lincoln, early in the year, when I notified him of the kids loitering at the park for hours, or skipping, or if they're allowed the free time during school hours, they walked through the middle of the street, asking to borrow money, even asked to borrow my car, but then it went from a kid walking the middle street down in Davis, pointing a cellphone at my girlfriend as a gun, blocking our car down Davis so she couldn't pass through. Most recently, I told him to get the heck out of here because they're throwing tree limbs and sticks at a neighborhood cat. His name's Charlie, it's not my cat, but he's a neighborhood cat, and... So, these are the type of activities that have been going on the past few months. These are the type of citizens that are being released from Lincoln, hours each day. Now, most recently, possibly trying to break into my house during school hours, but I was fortunately home and chased them off. Friends of theirs returned to throw a tree limb and a glass ball at my house. These citizens were able to call my cell, or my landline, attempting to be a representative of the school board. These kids to face and trash the park, after all the updates made at McCray Park. If we have the funds to renovate this park, we should have the funds to keep these kids in school where they belong. I've been trying to prevent these negative occurrences from happening with very little support from my contact at Lincoln. You know, I just, I feel like this is just going in a downward trend, and the bottom line, just to summarize, if you wouldn't want this type of activity in your neighborhood, as we don't want this in our neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for speakers in the public forum. Those are all the speakers, Madam Chair.
The next item on our agenda is D1, Monitoring Report Guard Rail 4. And for those of you unfamiliar, Guard Rail 4 states, "The superintendent shall not allow an environment for both students and staff that is unsafe and unwelcome." Dr. Roberts will be providing a presentation on Guard Rail 4 this evening. Dr. Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the capable DMPS team of leaders approach to have a collaborative presentation, I want to highlight how important it is for us to recognize that this is one of the most important guardrails, and while all of them certainly are being prioritized for support, ensuring a safe and welcoming environment has become a daily thought, and a lot of intentionality has gone in to making sure that we are provided a safe and secure environment. The board chair referenced the school shouldn't have occurred earlier here in Iowa. For many of us who have been in education for a very, very long time, we did not have discussions, classes, or even speakers in our classrooms, teacher preparation programs, about safety and security in schools, our school shootings. But we have seen since Columbine in 1999, Stoneman Douglas in 2018, and then we continue to look at the data around school shootings each and every year. In 2021, we had 73 school shootings in America. 2022, we had 79. In 2023, we had 82. Why am I conversant with this data? Why am I conversant with this data? There needs to be a call to action around the country for a response. Teachers and leaders and related service providers who show up each and every day, they are coming into our buildings, giving everything that they have to serve children. But in recent conversations with many of our teachers and having read so many of their emails, what is top of mind for them is, am I safe? I'm proud to be one of the leaders in this district because this is a board who has invested considerably in school safety. And we have an amazing team of leaders who each and every day continue to review and refine our safety and security practices. So as the team presents tonight, allow me to at least just manage your expectations that while you will hear at a very high level and with very compelling data so much of what we have already put in place and are considering, we do not intend to share anything tonight with you that will compromise our safety protocols and practices. Thank you for being here, team.
Good evening. I think I'm going to start tonight. My name is Jake Troja. I'm Director of School Climate, working the Student Family Services Team. Happy to present on school safety and represent our school safety team at the table tonight. So I would hope to do is review some of the investments that we've made as a district over the last three school years and then talk about our current work this school year. Many of our members of the safety team are in the audience tonight. And if we have further questions, that I would love to turn it over to their capable hands if necessary. So just a review of kind of the work we've been working on since post-pandemic. We formed a safety team, a multi-disciplinary team that we established in 2020. We have 19 members on that team currently. We meet every week and have implemented the CDC's protocols regarding safe schools. We work with many of these collaborative agencies here that you see. I won't read all those, but we have connections and work with those on a weekly basis of agencies that work with us as we work towards implementing safety in our school district. These are the main areas of focus we've had since we created our team in 2020 regarding school safety. One of the major areas that we've looked at is how we can increase the positive perception of all our stakeholders regarding school safety. Are we being visible in the efforts that we have? We've looked at reducing the incidence of risk behaviors reported by students as well and continue to look at how we can do our physical plant can be as ready as possible for any of those safety events. Some of the key investments we've made over the last three years, we'll go through those here briefly. I'm happy to answer questions and go deeper if necessary. But just generally speaking, in staffing, we've invested in four public safety officers, one public safety dispatcher, which is a really important investment during our school hours, ensuring that when communication comes into our team, that communication can be shared quickly and efficiently across our district. We've invested in off-duty, DMPD at all of our events. We also have 20 campus monitors that we deployed at middle school, 26 campus monitors at high school, and 14 restoration safety coordinators at our high schools over the last three years. In addition to that, with some of the tools and technology that we've implemented, we've implemented the statewide radios. We're able to talk with agencies at any time across the state. Continue to improve our security cameras, our camera access across the district. We've also worked on our dispatch software so we can track incidences. Every week, we review the data of incidences that we see come across our dispatcher's desk. We've implemented a district-wide safety handbook that aligns all of our practices together, that communicates to all of our building administrators and teams, all of our practices, anything from how do I update my badge access to accessing cameras to safety protocols during crisis events. We've implemented student IDs at all schools, secondary schools, able to print IDs on school site, low cost, able to distribute those to all students. Rave is our mass communication. We're able to communicate with different user groups at a moment's notice in case of crisis events. We've implemented lock boxes at all of our schools to keep track of any dangerous materials, contraband, things of that nature. Some physical plant updates, as, you know, in addition to what you've been already abreast to, all schools have identified temporary shelter sites. So annually, we review within the community to ensure that every school has a place to be in case there is a reason to leave the school. Could be water main break or something like that. We have those on file. We've also identified seven reunification sites across the city with Polk County Emergency Management. And we've also updated our visitor management protocols and procedures to ensure that we have access to our buildings that's safe and secure. Some of the policies that we have updated as well is our student code of conduct. We've ensured that repeated level three violations or high-risk behaviors are things that we're dealing with quickly and efficiently. We've updated our video sharing policy to ensure it's in alignment with the guidelines from the federal government. We've implemented trespassing, so we are able to serve trespassing onsite by our public safety team if necessary. We've also looked at ways that we can allow sex offenders or ensure that we have sex offenders identified when attending school events. And we've also worked with DMPD to ensure that our chain of custody is legal in case we possess illegal contraband and things as well. We've also implemented training around de-escalation. We've looked at reunification training. We've done some mass trainings with Heartland AEA. We've also worked with implementing scenarios in school law across our district. We've looked at implementing youth mental health first aid, and we've also implemented restorative practices. Those are the investments we made and continue to make in those areas. Looking ahead to this year and things that we've done so far this year, we invested in 10 restoration safety coordinators at middle school. We invested in four virtual teachers for students that have temporarily been removed from school. And we also continue to partner with community partner sites. And we actually have a bid out right now looking for some medical, middle school support. We've invested in video analytics, weapons mitigation technology through our camera access. We've implemented a statewide anonymous reporting application, which is Safe and Sound. It's part of the Governor's Safety Bureau. We've also implemented some crisis playbook, which is some quick reference guides during crisis events. We've implemented door numbering this year, door monitoring technology, classroom door locks. We've experimented in different ways to ensure that those can be done easily and effectively. We've implemented updated physical plant maps across all of our school buildings. And we've done entryway hardening to ensure that we have a safer entryway for our families. This year, we've implemented the CSTAG, which is Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines, which is a national-approved practice from the FBI regarding how we identify threats and classify threats against school. We have our next, our last training is actually tomorrow, so all school teams will be trained in those guidelines. We've worked on promoting mental health across our district. We have a grant at middle school that we're implementing currently. We've worked at working with our transportation team as well to support them in having safety protocols in place. We've done two reunification and functional exercises. I have another one established for April. And then we have also put out lesson plans that are occurring to work with lesson plans for active shooter events through National Organization. I love you guys. I'll pause for questions, or Dr. Roberts, should we take the questions at the end of the presentation?
As the board pleases.
Are there any clarification questions at this point?
I have a couple of questions.
I have a couple of questions. Let me start over. I have a couple of questions. You referred to changing or enhancing the perception of the safety in our district. Can you talk about how we're measuring that?
Yes. On the next couple of slides, I'll go through some student perspective-based data.
Perfecto.
Not a problem. Any other questions, Maria?
Mental health promotion, what do you mean by that?
Tier-one literacy, helping ensure that all staff members, community members at large, understand and have a good understanding of what mental health is, how we promote that in a positive way, what are factors that we can implement across all schools to ensure that mental health is positive and promoted as something that we would want to improve in our school district.
Would you expand on transportation support?
Sure. We're working with our transportation team to ensure that our expectations on the bus are clear and precise across all settings and that we have relatively good responses to when there's misbehavior occurring on the bus, that we have clear ways to access technology if we need to review those misbehaviors on the bus. We partner with DART to ensure that we're looking at those behaviors on the bus as well and that communication is clear to the building and that whose responsibility to respond to those events is clear. Those are the current things that we're working on with transportation, the infrastructure to ensure that those things can exist. For example, if something happens on DART, ensuring that the principal and the director of transportation can review that video in a timely fashion and make a decision that's informed.
Thank you.
Sure.
Jake and team, thank you. Just a couple of questions. When you look at investment, you talked about investments in safety. When you look at this philosophically, are you looking at more investments in technology upgrades? When you look at our infrastructure, are we ahead, behind as a district? And then how are you balancing human capital in safety with advancements in technology and upgrades as you're looking at that, just sort of philosophically?
Sure. Yeah, I'll let Jamie answer the things question if you'd like to. I can do the people part of things. You know, investing in people is something that my team and the rest of our larger student services team is doing. So that would look like this training regarding this comprehensive school threat assessment. And that's about $100,000 expense this year to ensure that all schools are trained in Level 1 and Level 2 guidelines. And what we do to record that and if that infrastructure is there for us to monitor that. So when I think about investment that we've described here, it's about the time and the dollars that it would take to ensure that staff and our support staff have the information and training they need to do that well. Another large investment would be our de-escalation training with one of our partners, which is CPI. Our goal is to have 80% of staff trained in de-escalation. And that's a six-hour investment for that training to happen for roughly 2,200 people. So that would be another example of people investment. Jamie, I didn't know if...
I can build on that in addition to Jimmy's willingness to come to the podium. Great question, and we certainly appreciate it. In terms of our physical structure, we have certainly looked at considerable investment in making sure that we are hardening all of our physical spaces. With regards to your question in terms of technologically, where are we? I believe that we have certainly been committed to making sure that we have a high level of sophistication in terms of our security structures and protocols. And that includes investment in the most recent AI technology, artificial intelligence technology. I know that our associate soup and team are continuously reviewing and refining and monitoring how we become really up to date in terms of those technology pieces. One piece that I will share is, you know, across the country right now, one of the strongest preventative measures of any violence that occurs in schools is if we can first act in a proactive way to detect weapons of any nature. And then I can assure you, without going into too much details, that we are committed to making sure that we have the most state-of-the-art technology in our regards.
That's what I was after. Thank you.
I think we keep going.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Some brief data here regarding perspective-based data. This is student data regarding 612 perspective on school safety. This is from our Panorama survey that we give twice school year. This is the most updated survey from this fall. This is all 612 students dating back to, that's the spring of 2019. This is our 912 student data. And this is our 68 student data. The big jump there is returning from the pandemic, students were, or during the pandemic and then returning from the pandemic.
So spring 2021 would be during the pandemic?
Returning from.
Returning from.
In March of that time. Students were especially excited to be back in school. And that was a national trend during that time as well. Physical fighting over the last three school years, this is current data for FY '24. So that's as of Friday of last week. But you could see a downward trend over the last school years in physical fighting. This is whole student data 612 because of the guardrails and the data reporting out at 612. This data is reported out 612. This is physical fighting data across grade levels. Generally speaking, a continued decrease per grade level. And then this is physical fighting reports, our incidents by race. Firearms, dangerous weapons, these are weapons.
Would you go back to that, please?
Not a problem.
Gracias.
And Jake, clarifying.
Please.
Between students.
Yes. So this would be physical violence. So this could be a student that does an incident with each other, and that would be two incidences or two students reported here, or a student that maybe has an assault on a staff member. That would be one student reported here.
Do you break that information out, student on a staff member?
We can. And this is reporting all those incidences.
Okay.
What actions have been taken to see the decrease? What would you attribute? They all seem to be decreasing.
Yes. I think there's a few things, and I'll give you my perspective. And I'm happy to have Dr. Roberts provide his perspective as well. I think updating our policy and being clear that this is unacceptable in our schools. We've been doing that for three school years. Not that it wasn't clear before, but we have a proactive response to that. So after one incident, we require that a meeting occurs between the family and the school to talk about physical violence and physical fighting at school. We've also implemented restorative practices at our 612 schools. We've increased, as you saw in the previous slides, our number of staff members, you know, at, from, I mean, our campus monitors bring more than double those numbers at high schools and middle schools to ensure that they have, you know, appropriate staffing in the hallway. I would put all those efforts that we've put together in that perspective to help lower the physical fighting that's happened at schools.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
I just have a quick question. So do you feel like all of our, this captures, everything that occurs, like, is reported? Or are there...
Everything that we're aware of is reported here. So are there instances of fighting that happen that we're not aware of? I'm sure.
But it would be if a staff member sees that they're reporting it?
Or if a student's reported it and we've investigated and been able to corroborate that, for sure.
So a fight across the street, not on campus, would that be included in here or not?
If it affects the good order of school, it'd be included in here.
And if we are aware of it, certainly it will be reported.
Absolutely.
Additionally, I think, while I do not want to get too deep because I know that my team will share additional information, but as we think about Madam Chair's question about, to what will we attribute the decrease that we're seeing? So, you know, the five competencies of socio-emotional learning, two of them are, one is self-management, and then certainly about self-regulation. When we've looked at those tenants and how students are better able to cope with issues of conflict, I think that certainly is a critical part of the reduction that we're seeing as well.
I mean, I looked at all this before too, and it's really impressive decreases of physical fighting. So I guess it's, if everything's being reported, then there is a significant decline in altercations that are happening in schools. But we don't see that reflected drastically in the panorama reporting. And I'm wondering how you rationalize that.
It's a great question. I'll give my opinion, and Dr. Roberts, feel free to cut me off at any time. My opinion on that, I think it's a little bit of a longer trajectory here to change perspective of school. I think that when we've asked our leaders that are digging into that information, asking students what it would take to be safer at school in that perspective, that data is a snapshot in time, at that one point in time. And this data that we're providing is over that long arc of a year. So looking at that, I think the trajectory that we would want to see is increased positive perspective from students. So I would assume that would happen over the next few years. It would be a long-term investment. This being decreased, you know, 100 fights annually, a couple hundred fights, we'd hope that would be reflected in the next few years as we see that data increase. So I hope that that would change long-term. But our partners at Panorama say that a 2% change is significant. And so we see a slight increase this year in 612 and think that that's still a positive movement. Nationally, looking at that data, again, looking at what, are we able to maintain a positive perception? Are we maintaining that? That would be positive based on what we see happening across the nation as well in student perspective at safety. So I don't know if I answer your question directly, Jen, and besides, I think it's a longer-term investment to change that perspective.
And very quick response to Ms. Knox's question. Certainly want to make sure that we are not necessarily conflating the hard data that we have around the reductions with a moment-in-time response to a survey. One of the things that we have to also attribute... One of the things that we have to also attribute Mrs. Knox to the decline or decrease is the work that is happening in schools, right, between school leaders, related service providers, and our teachers. They play such a critical role in making sure that the climate and culture of a school certainly is one that reflects sort of positive interactions and engagements with students. And we see that, you know, when we visit schools, for example, one very simple observation is the presence of adults in the hallways, interacting with students, doing passing time, having conversations with students before they enter classrooms. Those are critical tactical moves that we are continuously seeing increases around. You know, when you think about the work of teachers, and I wonder how much the community is aware of this, our teachers are not just content experts and specialists. They are wearing so many hats on any given day when they're in those schools, and they diffuse so much before things happen.
Let's take one question from Ms. Murdano, and then I think we'll keep going.
I would like to better understand the data that's being reported. Can you clarify if the referral counts here, is it students or is it referral? Is it incidents?
Yeah, that's a good question. For this one right here, is it incidents, the way you're getting?
And I'm seeing that you're reporting current year data.
Yes.
Is that as of semester one, and then is the, are the previous year's end-of-year data?
That's correct.
So the 23, 24-
Is just halfway.
Is just half a year.
Yes.
So it's not decreasing at that significant-
We're on pace to have the same numbers.
Okay.
So I think the data trend tends to be pretty level here after November. We see a slight spike in February and then pretty level after that. So I think if you double it, that would be more than, that would be more than we would expect. So we would, based on what we've seen in the past, we're on trend to be similar to decrease than we saw the year before.
Thank you.
Yes. Good point of clarification.
Let's keep going, just so we stay on time.
Firearms, dangerous weapons, again, to Mrs. Murdano's point, this is data as of last Friday. The previous years are end-of-year data. These events with weapons, for whatever reason, in the last eight years, in my experience, they tend to happen in spurts where three or four incidents happen in a short amount of time. So currently this year, we have seven. Grade level data. And then data by race. One of the things that we focused on, and one of the goals that we had on the team was reducing juvenile complaints, is that's when a student is charged and their complaint is sent to juvenile court. This was our data pre-pandemic, FY '19. Post-pandemic, 20, in year '22, we saw 109 students, which was an 80% reduction. Last year, we saw 63 juvenile complaints, which is almost a 90% reduction from FY '20. One of the items, topic of mine was bullying, so I wanted to review that data with you as well, and then talk about some of the Iowa code regarding that. Is it okay to transition to that? Okay. So Iowa Code 28028 defines bullying as these things, electric, written, verbal, physical act, conduct towards a student, and talks about being based on perceived or actual trait, which creates a hostile school environment. So Iowa Code is very clear on defining what bullying is, and so I'm going to articulate that in these next two slides. Iowa Code articulates hostile school environment as these things. It must be all of these things. It must be intentional, unwelcomed, creates harm, must be severe, persistent, or pervasive, interferes with education, and creates a perceived or actual imbalance of power. In addition to that, the victim of the bullying must, their perception must meet one of these four criteria. So it has to, the action has to create a hostile school environment, and the victim's perception must match the Iowa code here. That then would be coded as bullying. Some differences here that we make sure, we're not talking about peer conflict, we're talking about intentional behavior to create a power imbalance that's done over a course of time that leads to those negative effects on the previous slide. So there is age-appropriate misbehavior that happens that sometimes we say is bullying. We use that term loosely. Iowa Code is very strict on what that is, and it gives us a very clear definition of what it means to be bullied according to the code. Some of the things that, and I have a data slide here at the end, but some of the things we talk about prevention, we talk about recommending these strategies. This is recommended from the federal government, helping students develop social skills and how to access help. Talks about keeping lines of communication open, encouraging students to do what they enjoy, and model appropriate behaviors by adults. Some of the things that we're currently implementing that fit in those areas would be here. We have our SEL vision we're talking about here slightly, closely, been made aware about the GLEAM walks and some of the data regarding that. We've implemented a anonymous reporting app, which is this governor's app. And we also have implemented K-12 personal safety, which is part of our counseling curriculum. We work on our lines of communication, which is our student-teacher development around relationships. We look at that data often and look on investing in that. We look at our school and parent partnerships, and then we look at community partnerships, ways that we can continue to increase communication.
Just a question.
Yeah, please.
On the, what is the path that a student or a parent takes to raise an issue?
Sure.
They more than likely come with it being called bullying. So maybe explain the path.
Sure. Yeah, a complaint can come in many different ways. It can be the phone call that we receive as an administrator, it can be an email, it could be through anonymous reporting app, it can be through a referral from our complaint office in the office, you know, student services. But let's say it's a phone call. Parent calls and says that, you know, Jake's being bullied at school, gives us the information. We would call that, you know, an informal investigation would need to occur at that point in time. Like any other issue that pops up in school, administrator or the team's going to look into that. What's going on? What do I know to be true? How do I help respond to that? What's most important at the end of the day, matter if we label it bullying according to Iowa code or we don't, we still have to respond to that complaint and ensure that students feel safe at school. So that complaint comes in, and we do an informal investigation. If we investigate that and find that the victim or the potential victim's perception matches the law, then we would do a formal investigation, and that has a formal documentation process that we report out to the state in terms of founded, unfounded numbers. If we find that it doesn't match the law and it doesn't quantify in that area of bullying, we'd still respond to that. If it involves, you know, misbehavior, we would log that behavior referral. If it doesn't involve misbehavior, maybe it didn't, you know, it wasn't, didn't happen the way that it was reported, we would still log that information or contact log and keep track of that information. So there's a whole flow chart we have that kind of shows how we would handle those complaints or respond, you know, reports.
And so for a parent, if, just thinking through this, is their first step, do you have a recommendation on the first step? Is the recommendation that they should first speak with the teacher and the principal? Maybe just talk through that, I think it'd be helpful to understand.
Absolutely. If parent has a concern, 100% recommend talking with who they're most comfortable with at the school. If that's the classroom teacher, that would be fantastic. If it's the building principal, that would be, also be great as well. All of those can be addressed by, you know, there's a, there's a whole process for us to be able to address that. So to the teacher would be fine. If the teacher has not noticed that behavior and wants to escalate that to the administrator to investigate, not a problem.
Jake, just a question, and this again may be for future reporting, but do we have a sense of, or do you keep track of, how many students report bullying but then are not willing to follow through and act on consequences? And the reason I ask that is because we measure student satisfaction or student sense of safety, and if a student does not believe the adults will act in their, to their benefit, they may not be willing to call out the behavior, thinking that there would be retaliation. Is there any measure of that?
I'd have to think about how we might be able to get to that number and get back to you on what's an appropriate way to respond to that.
So what if, as we were talking, like the parents were going to the teacher, were going to the principal, if that doesn't come out of it? There's a lot of parents that honestly say, you know, I've contacted this person, then this person, and nothing's happened. What's the next step after that?
Yeah, I don't want to speak for Tim and the team on the student services side, or the student support side of things, but I would say, from there, I think we have, if they're not getting the response that they want at the school, there's, obviously supervisor can respond to that. I know that our Office of Schools has a complaint form that can be completed as well, which is available on the website. That would also be a documented way to form, you know, formalize a complaint. And then again, if it's around bullying specifically, you know, that can be to me and help direct the school and help support the school in, you know, implementation of that policy. Ultimately, we'd go to the state of Iowa if the complaint went further, and their Office of Civil Rights is who oversees bullying implementation.
Let's keep going.
Sure.
And then we'll ask some additional questions.
Yeah, I'll finish up these, just some examples of some things we're doing in terms of prevention, and then this is our founded events. The state of Iowa requires us to report out founded events every school year. So this is events that have been investigated. Once investigated, we have decided that we can cooperate in that this matches the code and therefore is a founded event. So we see that data here. Again, to Kim's point, 22 founded events as of last Friday.
Thank you, Jake.
Hello. My name is Allison Finley, and I am a Director of Student Services, and one area that I support is our social and emotional learning. So I'm going to talk with you about that and some of the prevention strategies that we're putting into place and that social-emotional learning can lead to increased safety in schools. So we're going to start just making sure that everybody is on the same page in terms of what the definition of social-emotional learning is. It's the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes in order to develop their healthy identities, to manage their emotions, to achieve their goals. They feel and show empathy for one another. They establish and maintain supportive relationships and make responsible and caring decisions. And if you notice that visual, those are the five core competencies, two of which Dr. Roberts was talking about earlier. These competencies can be taught to students and to adults at various stages developmentally throughout their lives. So pre-K through adulthood, we can teach these skills and promote these skills for students. And we know that these competencies are really important in order for people to achieve academic success, to have school and civic engagement, to improve their health and wellness, and to have fulfilling careers. So I'm going to share some research with you around social and emotional learning. Oops. Okay, there we go. So we know that in terms of safety and well-being, there's not one single answer about how to create safe environments. But we do know that social-emotional learning plays a critical role in promoting that in schools. It's preventative, it fosters emotional safety. There's research that shows it actually reduces violence when students are engaged in learning more about social-emotional learning. It's not a panacea, and it's not going to fix everything, but it is one tool that we have in our pockets to use. We also know that research confirms that social-emotional learning helps create safe and supportive environments that promote learning and well-being. Studies show that students who have strong relationships with their teachers and with their peers are more motivated and engaged in learning, and they're more willing to grapple with challenging material and persist at difficult learning tasks, which actually aligns with our GLEAM work that I'm sure you've heard about through our academic goals. There are other factors besides just safety that SEL benefits. We know that students who are engaged in social-emotional learning at a young age, that actually increases their academic performance as they get older. We know that if you are a student in elementary school and you engage in a social-emotional learning program at your school, by the time you're in high school, studies have shown that you gain an average of 13 percentile points higher on your assessments than students who have not been engaged with social and emotional learning. Then, we know that mental health is really important right now, and social-emotional learning helps with mental health. We know they're not the same thing, and sometimes people get them confused. They are not the same thing. But social-emotional learning can increase social and emotional health, which is a key aspect of mental wellness. It's really important to know that promoting mental wellness is different than treating mental illness. We are not treating, we're not diagnosing mental health conditions. What we're doing is we're asking teachers to build healthy relationships with students and to create opportunities for all students to learn and practice those skills, and it does not replace therapeutic responses for students. That's also highly important, but that is not what social-emotional learning is. Whoops, it keeps going back. All right. Social-emotional learning also builds and strengthens skills that lead to future positive outcomes. We know that students who have been engaged in social-emotional learning are more motivated, they have higher levels of communication, better teamwork, which into adulthood actually reduces the likelihood of future violent behavior. It reduces crime, and it reduces substance abuse. And we also know, and this is highly important as well, that social and emotional learning benefits our teachers, too. We know that when adults have positive social-emotional learning, they're more likely to be able to protect themselves from burnout. They develop nurturing relationships with their students, they serve as very positive role models, they are able to regulate their own emotions. And when they do that, they also are able to have less burnout, they have greater efficacy, and lower job-related anxiety, and they aren't leaving the profession. So we know that social-emotional learning is really benefiting every member of our school communities.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
Not yet. And I should have foreshadowed that guardrail, too, is on the consent agenda. So these two guardrails are meshing together. So, thank you, Allison.
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Gregor Girls. I'm Director of Elementary Schools, and I'm also doing a dual role this year where I'm Principal of the Downtown School. It is truly a privilege to sit here this evening, and so we appreciate you, Madam Chair, Superintendent, and Board, and the community being able to share out this evening. As I'm sitting here and as I've been reflecting on this work, it's really the journey, and it's the continued journey that we'll continue to pursue over the days and years to come. I'm going to be sharing out kind of the journey, specifically the roadmap that we've been on. There we go. And so specifically what we're calling out tonight really began 2018, 2019, and the work that we worked with our community, which ultimately led to our board goals. That then spearheaded the ongoing work when we call out specifically social-emotional learning and the tie-in between our board goals and the guardrails. As you fast forward through these years, you can see the progression of some of the work, and now, and then we'll call out attention to what we're doing specifically right at this time. But you'll see, as you look at this slide specifically, kind of the comments that are mentioned at the bottom or in the oranges color, that is a lot of the work that we did with our community, working directly with you, the Board, and then our parents and community, and our staff. And so throughout that, we were continuing to solicit feedback. Specifically, a partnership that we were able to engage in was our work with CASL. Winter of 2020, so this is pre-the COVID time, right? During that time, CASL was working with us, and we completed the Celeria. The Celeria is the social-emotional learning readiness and engagement analysis, and through that, we were able to learn a lot about our district. Many individuals were interviewed during that time. That was from the administrative level down to the building level, district level down to the building level, also engaged our students and some families in that process. So it was a very complex and comprehensive analysis that took place. From there, we then fast forward, 2020, 2021 was the first year that we actually engaged in an actual position with the DeBong Public Schools with an SEL coordinator. So that's when that individual was hired. It's also a time that our true implementation plan began to be developed, began to be then carried out. Pilot schools were selected and implementation began. We see a transition there, and we have had a couple about- see a transition there, and we have had a couple bumps in the road. But when we go to fall 2022, we've learned a lot through this process. And so the initial implementation plan that we developed in 2020, 2021, we needed to make some adjustments. That was based on our continued partnership with CASL. That was truly based on the feedback from our pilot schools, and adjustments were made and improved within our implementation plan. It does skip. Thinking, though, the work that we've been doing, thinking of 2023, you could say we really pushed on the gas, and the work really began to take hold across our district. The spring of 2021, we developed in close partnership with CASL a on-demand course. This was the idea that we had a number of individuals across our district, and this is really speaking at the teaching level, at our staffing level, that had a variance of understanding of what was social emotional learning. And so this course was developed with the idea that all of our champions, so each of our schools, preschool through high school, all have an SEL champion that's been selected. The champion is an individual that has a passion for this work, and the hope would be that they're working very closely with the building administration and doing that work. So we needed to do some level setting of where all the champions were across our district. This course was the vehicle in order to do that, and it's really just building that foundational knowledge of the competencies and so forth. Administration also had access to this course. With ongoing changes that we've had, there's still a need to continue to address that. So I think even though it's highlighted as spring 2023, that work will continue to be a part of the journey. With that, then, knowing that we had vested interests in individuals within our schools, we also know that we need to learn and grow. And so professional development was rolled out. And so when you look at spring of 2023, the champions began to engage in monthly professional learning, just to deepen, continue to deepen, as they're learning this stuff online and through the technology. It's like, okay, the human part of connecting to that work and doing some of that. Continuing into then, also into the spring, they began to then share knowledge. So depending on where each school has been in this process, they began to form SEL teams at the building level, again, some further along than others. And so it was an opportunity to continue that professional learning and growth with specifically the champions, but then the transition into the schools. Okay, so we end this school year, lots on our plate, lots of great momentum. One of the, probably the largest things that came out of this work was where are we at at the tier-one level? And so you can kind of see towards the end of that, there was a need to develop a, when we look at, if you were to step into the downtown school, and then you were to step into Studebaker on the other side of town, what was at the tier-one level that all of our students, or if you step into a high school, that all of our students would be able to take part in? The RFI process we engaged in this past fall. And so the big things that you see there for fall 2023 is that continued implementation of our SEL plans, that is being enacted, and continued professional learning with our administration and champions. But probably the biggest thing that we're lifting up from the fall is the engagement of the RFI process. And so as we then propel into spring of 2024, where we currently are now, you will see... You'll really see the opportunity for our vision to come to life. When I look at this, there's some keywords. Obviously, at the top, the Des Moines Public Schools is advancing "social emotional learning for equity and excellence." What does that then mean? And what does that mean for our students, for our staff, and our community? We know, these are the humans that we're working with. And so when you think about some of the presentation that Jake shared this evening and the ongoing work, it's the opportunity of how, you know, how do we truly lift up the excellence that's within our district? And so at the student level, you know, supporting them in their lifelong goals, developing them as they grow to be future our citizens. At the staff level, just creating those safe environments and opportunity for them to be their best, that they're right there in front of our students each and every day, that they're presenting themselves in a way that they're at their best, and that they've got those foundational skills and knowledge, and their health is there. And then at the community level, just our continued partnership with other entities. You know, we're not, this is not, we can't DMPS do this alone. We need our entire community to come together. And so how through this work, through our vision and whatnot, that we can work with our community to continue to thrive and be in the work as we engage the students. What does that specifically mean now? All of our schools have had opportunity to engage in our district vision of SEL. Each school then needs to say, okay, what does that then mean for this school community? And how does that community then connect to our other school communities? And so we're in the process this spring of truly defining and working with each of our building leaders, our champions, and then those teams of their vision. What is the next best step that that school community needs to take to move forward, and then their goals in doing that and accomplishing that vision? At the tier-one level, that RFI process with obtaining a tier-one curriculum for SEL, we're going to be piloting. We have five that have risen to the top, five curriculums that have risen to the top. And so opportunity for, at all levels of our district, to engage in some of that pilot so that we can make the best decision. Obviously, lots of feedback and considerations will go into that process, but looking at just consistency across our district, and through that, just how are we communicating? You know, the idea that knowledge is powerful, and in absence of that, we create our own stories. And so how can we just really be intentional with how we're communicating out, communicating out to each school, but then how does that connect with the greater good across our district? And so I think that last bullet probably sums up the most, is that all Des Moines Public Schools staff will have meaningful opportunities to develop their own social emotional competencies, knowing that they're at the front line, and that they're going to make that greatest impact. When we look at the research of who's making the impact, it is those individuals right there that are making that impact on our students and being able to go through that. So I think I circle back to Madam Chair's challenge at the beginning of connecting with your child 30 minutes a day. You know, that resonated with me, as I said, in the audience, of the opportunity to truly hear each of our students. We, as educators, are challenged to do that every single day, knowing we have our lesson plans, we got to get through this agenda for the day, we have all this to do. But then also capturing those moments that you can see, Greg just isn't walking into the building the same way that day. How do I need to make that personal connection with that individual? And maneuvering through that as educators, we need to empower our staff. And then I think the challenge also with our, with peers, how can we lean in to those relationships and realize that there's lots of potential? So I agree, Madam Chair, with the challenge as parents of spending that time in the evening, and then I think Superintendent Roberts, the challenge, the call to action, I think each of us play a definite role in that. And while the topic is not necessarily the best topic to share this evening with all the realities with safety, it's also very critical to this work. And I think you can kind of see in guardrail two and guardrail four, the kind of the link between our social emotional work and that safety work.
Thank you.
Questions?
Well, I think we'll maybe go around the table, and let's just see if anybody has questions.
Half question, half observation. As a new member of this board, trying to tie this back to our goals and guardrails and data. The, my impression, sitting here, listening to this presentation, is that we're on a six-year journey where we're still talking about pilots. My question and challenge to the team, I think, would be, what is your urgency? Because as a parent and listening to some of the feedback that we've gotten from the community, I think that's where my head is about that. And then I guess tying it back to goals and guardrails, you know, you talked about what social emotional learning is supposed to do. And I, sort of the rough articulation of my question is, where's our graduation rates? Where are our outcomes? That this is supposed to benefit. The district has made an enormous investment in this. When are we to expect? And programs realistically don't just happen. You don't flip a switch and the culture changes. So given that, and given that patience that we might all expect to have, when do we expect this to kick in?
I, do you want to go? I think that that's a very good question. I have the privilege of being able to work with people who are implementing social emotional learning across the entire country as part of the CASL Fellows Program this school year. And so when I meet with superintendents and other people who are leading this work, it's the human work. It doesn't happen overnight. It takes a lot of time to change people's beliefs, and social emotional learning is about changing beliefs. And I know, like, we have a lot of urgency around it, and we also know that this work doesn't happen overnight, and this work is just this constant. You're never fully there. And that is what everybody who's been engaged in this journey, they do see small incremental changes, but it is not fast. And so that's what I'm learning through that program and through talking with other people implementing this, who are doing really amazing things, is that it is slow-moving because it's about changing your beliefs, but it does happen.
Ms. Alonso?
I'm thinking, so I would prefer to pass and then maybe come back to me.
Ms. Marterano?
I'm curious about the professional development. You identified in your presentation that it's meaningful opportunities. Does that mean that all employees are engaging, or does that mean that the opportunity exists and they have to sign up, or is there any sort of requirement around?
Yeah. Knowing the size of our district and knowing that all need to be a part of this work, finding a vehicle to do that with all staff is definitely a challenge. Our belief is that if we can empower, and this is the job description or the role of the SEL champion, that if you have that champion within your building and in tandem with administration and that SEL team that's formed, that the opportunities for professional development can then, I'll use the term roll down. What that looks like is ultimately the challenge, because I sit here, present, you're going to filter it through your lens, Mrs. Knox is going to filter it through her, I mean, each of us would filter it. And so I think our ongoing challenge, and again, a reason with the RFI process, how at the tier-one level across all of our buildings, that there is a common thread in that, and that will be that continued work.
And then I just have a statement regarding Patrick's question. We, as a board, identified SEL as a priority in a guardrail just last year and asked the superintendent and their team to align resources with this guardrail just a year ago. So I know that the work has been underway for this entire roadmap, but we, as a board, haven't empowered and allowed resources to be allocated in a way that perhaps would really move the needle, even though it does take time, like Allison said.
Yeah. Thanks for the clarification.
Ms. Knox?
I just need a reminder. Do we, I know we have SEL champions in each building. Are they compensated for that extra? Okay, yes. And I recall in this conversation last year, kind of around some of the issues around the rollout, was Matt sharing some of the challenges of getting those champions from buildings together because they all had different roles within buildings. Was there a decision to realign those at all, or are you figuring out how you can kind of bring them, any update on that, I guess?
Yeah. So for this school year, we continued with having principals choose the social emotional learning champion at their school, so that it's not just a single role, because we want people who are really invested in this work, right? And so what we did this year, that is different than what we did last year, and we're having more attendance, is we are having our meetings every other month, and then in the in-between months, we're going out to the school to them, so that we can be in the school, and then we can support the SEL champions at the school level every other month. So that has helped with some of that.
Great. And I think my last question is just maybe around, just like a pulse of, like, teacher and people in the building engagement in this SEL work, kind of what's their hunger and appetite? If anyone could share any, just kind of give us a glimpse into that?
I think you'll see a larger, there's a range across our district. It's also moving away from the idea of, in essence, like, stop, drop, and SEL type of, it's like, you don't do it for this 15 minutes of your day. And so, you know, as we think about our board goals and on the academic pieces, how do we weave in the competencies through all of our work? That just is another layer, as our teachers are preparing each day, of how, as I'm introducing this new math concept, how do I also introduce, you know, some of that management or some of the other competencies that would go along with that?
And we're talking about that for training also. I can't remember who asked that question. But we are talking about how do we integrate social emotional learning into every single training that happens across the district, because it doesn't live in isolation. It only works when every single human in our, in our school community is engaged in this work. And so we're working with our other partners who provide professional learning to integrate it and how it works for them, too.
Thanks. I'm just really mindful, we ask a lot of our teachers, right, to deliver our curriculum, and then now pause and try to think about how to be an SEL champion. And so I really appreciate, Greg, your last comments about everyone being involved in this, because I think a lot of the goals of SEL are what we're hearing, at least I'm hearing, when I'm talking to our students, when I'm talking, when we're out doing these board listening sessions. You know, this is like a top theme that's bubbling up as a need. So, you know, I appreciate you pointing it out, Kim, that it's only been a year that it's officially been a goal, because I think it deserves more resources and attention. But I just don't want to be blind that it's not only our teachers. It's a lot more, and they need to be supported in that.
Ms. Campos?
I would also lift up just the ongoing challenge of, as we work with all of our staff across the district. So, you know, the bus driver, and as a student steps onto the bus, and how do we work with that community of employees, our, as students walk through that breakfast line in the morning and engaging. And so it's like, that's our challenge is working with all of our staff, and that'll be some of the ongoing work.
Ms. Campos?
I don't have any questions, because I think Jenna looked at my paper, because all the questions I was going to ask, she took. But no, thanks for being here. This gave me a lot of insight of what they do, so I'm very grateful for your presentation.
I'd like to ask a question, because it may have budgetary implications. I saw the word curriculum, and I have to be honest, I got a little sweaty. So, and it really connects to the question that Jenna had, because it feels like curriculum is another thing that our teachers have to do. And so if you could speak to curriculum and any potential costs that you might want to foreshadow, that would be helpful. And then my second question is, ultimately, who is accountable? And when I say accountable, as in a performance review, there is an accountability that they're, they're being held accountable to moving SEL forward, and where is that showing up in performance reviews for people across the district?
So I can speak to the curriculum piece. And what I have to say about that is, when we went through the RFP process, one of the things that we lifted up as a need for any curriculum that we might choose is that it does not take any planning on the teacher part, like, five minutes or less. So it's something that is there for them to just be able to really quickly implement, not a whole lot of, without a whole lot of planning ahead of time. And it's meant to be, like, maybe during a morning meeting. So we have... ahead of time. And it's meant to be, like, maybe during a morning meeting. So we have, in the top five, those are all curriculums that were super easy for a teacher to implement, so it doesn't feel like it's one more thing. And it's interesting, I just, and I shared this story the other day, I just was able to speak with a teacher who taught a social emotional learning last year to some students. And what she came back saying was, I think I learned more than the students. I think that I learned, when I'm starting to feel frustrated, now I'm going to take some deep breaths. So I do think that it benefits both the adults and the students. There is going to be a cost associated with it. We're in the process of, we have some task force teams that are starting to meet with those top five, so we're not really sure what the cost will be yet. It depends on what those task force teams come back and present. And those teams include teachers, and administrators, and counselors, social workers.
Let me build on that. Madam Chair, thank you. Excellent question and inquiry. I certainly want to make sure that we are signaling that we will not necessarily include the word evaluation of teachers or any adult who is implementing or participating, when we're thinking about SEL, right? There's a plethora of research around the country that tells us that SEL has a positive impact, not only on student outcome, but again, on how we are able to retain adults, because those five tenants, right, responsible decision-making, self-awareness, building solid relationship skills, social awareness, they are critical life skills. And when we think of SEL, I want us to also consider this dichotomous relationship between technical versus the adaptive. When we think of curriculum in terms of content, math, English, science, social studies, those are highly technical. We are delivering a product, we're expecting students, or whoever the receiver is, to be able to either regurgitate, learn, or take an assessment. But SEL, this is more about the adaptive work, right? I want to certainly quote from Harvard University's Ron Heifetz, who is the guru and father of adaptive leadership. And essentially, what this means is, when we think about SEL, this is where we're attempting to change and tweak the values and beliefs of individuals who are partaking in this. So, like Mrs. Knox, I too am always wondering about adding another thing to teachers' plates. In this case, this is really voluntary. And, you know, our desire is for individuals who are participating in this to start to see the benefits of it. And we're going to continue to keep our finger in the pulse. The evaluation and monitoring will come from this team that is sitting here, yours truly, not our members of our leadership team, to make sure that what we are doing is not making it incredibly burdensome on our teachers, but we're adding value to them. So that's the goal.
Thanks. I want to be sure to call on Ms. Caldwell Johnson.
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. I want to reemphasize the comment that Board Member Martorano shared, relative to us really elevating this just in the last year, as an area of focus for not only this board, but the district as a whole. And Patrick, to your point around still being in pilot phase, you know, I've been around this work for a while. I remember when we first introduced it, and we didn't really even fully and completely understand what we were getting ourselves into. But over time, I think we've become a bit more conversant, not only with the depth and need for this kind of work, but also the level of rigor associated with getting to the ends that we want to get, relative to social emotional learning. I sort of liken it to emotional intelligence for adults, and how we talk about our own emotional intelligence, and how we reveal that to ourselves, and how we realize it. And for students, it's really even, you know, more challenging. I think my question beyond my comment really is, it's really about self-regulation, and ways that we introduce traditional and non-traditional ways for students to really be able to not only recognize their social emotional intelligence, but also ways that they can better manage. And I guess I would ask Greg, are there non-traditional ways that we are approaching SEL in our district? I know that there were times in certain buildings where, you know, we were doing yoga every morning, and we were doing those experiential things, that really helped students to sort of get in touch with themselves as they prepare for the day. I'm wondering if there are options for us to introduce more and more of that as a means to get to higher level of competence for our students, relative to social emotional learning.
Yeah. Terry, thank you for lifting that up. I think that you definitely hit the nail on the head, as far as thinking of our vision and the work with our partnerships across our city. There's opportunity to definitely increase some of those non-traditional platforms that we can introduce this work and continue to work with each of our students. That will be an opportunity that we want to tap into as we further this work. And I think, to some extent, the world is our possibility. I mean, the oyster, you know, the analogy that goes along with that, is what do we take advantage of? And I think as our partners are raising their hand and wanting to connect with us, how can we do that together?
Thank you. I think for the purposes of wrapping this up, Ms. Alonso Diaz?
I'll wrap it up.
There you go. Do you have a question you'd like to ask?
I have some comments, and maybe a question. So what are the characteristics of an SEL champion?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the SEL, well, you don't have to just be an SEL champion and assigned to that role to be an SEL champion. I think we all are SEL champions in our schools. You have to have a strong desire to lead this work, in terms of the actual role that people are fulfilling. So, we really want them to also possess the social emotional competencies. And we're never, ever, not a single person is ever fully there, because it's constant learning and reflecting. And so we do really look for that reflection to help make decisions and move to the next step.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking at you, looking at Greg for, like, additional-
Do you have anything?
No, I'll just lift up, too, the SEL champion is on top of the official job that they've been hired for. And so we do not have in our schools a full-time, this is your contract as an SEL champion. So it could be, it could be a classroom teacher, it could be a counselor, and they're doing this on top. And I think it's looking for those individuals that can champion the work, and can also help strategically take the vision and enact that, to some extent, Dr. Roberts was lifting up, of the adaptive work that needs to take place. So individuals that naturally have some of those tenants are those that are raising their hand to be those SEL champions.
Ms. Finley, you, I heard you share your presentation, and it really, it focuses on the benefits, right, and how it helps a child, right, and the advantages of implementing SEL. You're right, we all should be champions. At this table, anyone in the district, anyone doing this work, needs to be a champion. I heard the word SEL champion as if though it's a job that is expected of one person that has that title. And that job belongs to me, it belongs to everyone that has contact directly and indirectly with our students. I think that there is a lot more that we could do. And my question was, how do we, at the board table, support this? And you mentioned that it's hard to change beliefs. Indeed, it is. I think that our district needs to have this be a value, because at the end of the day, our values lead our behavior, our decisions, right? It has to be a compass. So I hope that we can support the work more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ms. Alonso Diaz. I think at this point, this conversation, it was a presentation focused on D1, the monitoring report, which was guardrail four. I'd like to move forward with deciding whether we, as a board, would like to accept the monitoring report, as providing evidence of compliance with a reasonable interpretation of guardrail four. To state out loud, interim four A, we are reported as not on track, interim four B, not on track, and interim four C, that data is not available yet. So may have a motion and a second to approve item D1. Martorano, so moved.
In a second.
Okay, I heard a motion by Martorano, a second by Campos. Is there any discussion, or does anyone have questions? Ms. Knox?
I just have one quick question. Sorry, I probably should have asked this earlier. I feel like this is the second or third time when we've looked at this data and sort of had the feedback that the panorama, since it's a moment in time, is maybe not the best way to measure this. Is that a valid thought? Or any other, I mean, is there any other feedback on feeling like we're not moving on the numbers, because this is maybe not the right way to measure that?
Yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Knox. Excellent question. The panorama data, as any survey did, is just a single data point. I think it's important as well for us to continue to make sure that we are celebrating those areas where we are seeing growth, and recognize and acknowledge that the areas where it appears as if we're not moving the data, to continue to revisit the conversations about what strategically we should do differently. And so I certainly am not in favor yet of disbanding the use of the panorama survey. I don't believe we have enough compelling data to do so. But it's a question that I'll bring back to the larger team for us to consider.
It seems like a good time to have that conversation when we head into the goals and guardrails discussion, is to get some feedback from the superintendent about the best way to put forth interims.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that out loud, because the data clearly doesn't reflect all the work that's being done. And I know how discouraging it is to sometimes come up here and not see movement reflecting the action. And I just want to be sure that we're finding success.
Thank you. Excellent observation. Looking forward to expand on that when the time comes.
Great. So let's move forward. We had our discussion. Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
Great. The vote is approved, seven, nothing. And to the team, thank you so much, Greg, and Allison, and Jake, for your time and presentation.
Thank you.
So with that, we are going to move to the consent agenda. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in discussion or deliberation with a speaker regarding comments made to agenda items. Discussion and deliberation will remain among board members at the board table, with speakers' comments informing the board's discussion, deliberation, and determinations as deemed necessary. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers?
No speakers.
Thank you. Ms. Campos, I believe you have the consent motion?
I do. I move that the board approves the consent items in accordance with the recommended action for each item on the consent agenda, including bills previously authorized, certified, and approved for payment by the board secretary in the amount of $3,331,537.32. And the procurement transactions of the amount of $649,812.58.
We have a motion by Campos and a second, oh, may I have a second, please?
Alonso, second.
And a second by Ms. Alonso. Are there any discussion, or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your vote.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
Seven, zero. The consent items are approved. I do want to say thank you. I know some people are leaving, but we really should take a moment to call out our public safety officers and all the people that are part of the complex, that are behind the scenes, doing the work led by the leadership team. So please extend our thanks to all the people that help daily keep our students safe. Next on the agenda is one public hearing. We have item F1, public hearing for B9143 South Union HVAC upgrades rebid. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item F1? There are no speakers. Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martorano, second. We have a motion by Dix and a second by Martorano. Any discussion? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved, seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, personnel recommendation, receive, file, and action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review and accept my recommendation that the teaching contracts be terminated effective immediately, for the reasons that are set forth in the superintendent's notice.
May I have a motion and a second to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
Alonso, so moved.
Martorano, second. We have a motion by Alonso and a second by Martorano. Any discussion, or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved, seven, nothing. Next item on the agenda is G2, purchase of property, portion of 205 East 18th Street. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board approve the purchase of property listed below, from the CNR Realty LLC, in the amount of $73,481.
May I have a motion and a second to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
Dix, so moved.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The board is approved, the vote is approved, seven, nothing. Next, we have one information-only item. Item is H1, Head Start Policy Committee Meeting Minutes, November 2023. Next on the agenda, we have items of privilege. I would like to ask if our board members would like to share anything at this time.
I couldn't remember what button to push, sorry. I just want to, first of all, thank our community for your outpouring of participation in our board listening sessions, from our students, to our teachers, to our staff, to our parents, to our just community members who care about Des Moines Public Schools. It's been wonderful to be a part of, and we are not done. We have some other upcoming listening sessions, so make sure to check out the homepage. We have a virtual one on Friday night, I think, is, I'm on the virtual one on my Friday evening, so come join me. And a couple others, I believe. So check it out. And just wanted to, again, extend my thanks. It's been, it's always uplifting to listen to people who care. So thank you for caring.
I'll second Mrs. Knox's observations about the listening sessions. But I also wanted to lift up, last night, as I was watching the coverage of the Iowa caucuses, I was reminded over and over and over again that there were a lot of schools that were open last night, and that there was probably one person responsible for staying, and a staff member staying and being at that school, while that all went on last night. And so just a thank you to all the DMPS staff that participated and allowed that process to go forward in Iowa last night.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just want to send a shout-out to my BLA boosters. The Lincoln High School Annual Pancake Fest is scheduled for this Saturday, the 20th, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Come out to support Lincoln High School, Bill Lincoln Hire, $7, all the pancakes you can eat, and they're always great. So hopefully, some of you will be able to join us.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell Johnson. Thank you, Ms. Caldwell Johnson.
Jenna, thank you for mentioning our listening sessions. Indeed, we are not done, and we do hope to see the entire, the entire district in our sessions. We have, we have Patrick showing me in a larger screen because he knows I'm very blind and I'm looking at my phone. Thank you, Patrick. So we, we have several sessions happening still, and thank you to everyone that participated filling out our survey. Amazing. We did receive many results, and I'm excited to hear, to see how many more we get, how many responses we get with our listening sessions. And so please join us. For sure, we're going to have food at these sessions. So if you want to get some food, please come. Please come. Thank you.
Any other items from the board? Dr. Roberts, I'll turn it over to you for your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board teammates, community partners. The state of Iowa has been in the news and viewed around the world on every major news channel in recent weeks for a number of things, a number of reasons. But there are three that stands out to me, indulge me as I share with you this evening. The first is on January 4th, this district's director of communications, Phil Roder and I, started our day the way that every educator in this country who works in the pre-K-12 arena would want to begin their day. We visited pre-K classrooms around 8:00 a.m. It was approximately 8:30 on that day when we received information via a call, text messages, and radio communication that, the kind of communication that no educator ever wants to receive, regardless of where they are. And certainly is the kind that every school and school district leader and even board member dreads and hope that they will never, ever, ever have to receive. There was a school shooting in the campus of a neighboring school district. The sad news that our neighbors at Perry resulted in the death of sixth grade student Amir Jalif and principal Dan Marburger and injuries to several other students hurts deeply. Our hearts goes out to Amir's friends. I can only imagine a sixth grader having to ask the question of their parents, what happened to my friend? Our hearts goes out to Amir's family. Our heart goes out to principal Dan Marburger and his immediate family and his Perry family. Perry community, please know, and you've heard from our chair earlier, that as you navigate this time of bereavement, sadness, and difficulty, your neighbors here at Des Moines Public Schools, we stand ready to support you with the sharing of any resource that we have at our disposal. The second item that's tossed in the news around the world, this state and its capital has been in the news during the past several weeks for the recently concluded Republican caucus and the impact of voting in the midst of record low and frigid temperatures. And while the caucus is an important monumental event, what stands out to me in the members of the DMPS executive cabinet and leaders is the fact that we had to close schools or make the call for delays, which resulted in severe interruptions to the very reason we're here every day, our instructional program. And while I know that oftentimes when we make the call, it's not pleasing in the ears or in the hearts of every single person, rest assured that a lot of conversations, a lot of data review, thoughtfulness, and empathy as an orientation goes into making these decisions. So we're asking for your grace when we make the decisions and it doesn't align with where you sit or how you're feeling. And third, and finally, Governor Kim Reynolds, in her condition of the state address last week, uplifted her support for and her demonstration that she values teachers and educators. She highlighted the important and amazing work that is happening at Des Moines Public Schools with regards to our teachers and our leaders, and she talked about the work that we've embarked upon in a positive light. The governor also proposed what many are deeming to be a significant increase in teachers' salaries and compensation that will hopefully add some value to the 30,000 teachers who serve in the more than 328 school systems here in the state of Iowa. It is clear to me that many of us who have been bestowed with the positions to influence what happens in the pre-K-12 education system, we recognize and value that the teachers here in the United States do not get the just due and are not as revered as they ought to be. As we think about where we stand, particularly during the last 30 years, in comparison to the most developed countries in the world, we have a lot of work to do. We are beginning to see a light at the end of the tunnel with approvals such as that that the governor has proposed when it comes to teacher compensation. I know for a fact that this board is incredibly invested in what happens next, and so is the executive cabinet. While we've seen a light at the end of the tunnel to make sure that we are demonstrating how much we value teachers through our decisions around compensation, the light needs to become much brighter if we're going to encourage, recruit, and retain our teachers. A critical aspect of us getting to a place of real excellence here in Des Moines Public Schools and certainly in schools across the state is for us to make sure that we are valuing those who serve in this space. The reality is, many school districts' hands are tied because we have a positive of resources. The reality is, we do not have unlimited resources. What we do have is unlimited admiration and affection and commitment to make sure that we're supporting teachers. We thank you for your grace and patience as we navigate this time around what we are going to do to truly show you how much we value you. As always, I will close with a reminder of our commitment as a district and a district's leadership team to everyone who serves in teaching, support, and leading, that we truly want to make sure that every day that you show up to our doors, whether it's during the heat of summer or minus 38 degrees, we see you, we hear you, and we're here to support you. Thank you. Madam Chair concludes my remarks.
Thank you for joining us this evening. We greatly appreciate you all. This meeting is adjourned at 7:51. We will take a brief break and then move into our work session to receive a presentation from the chiefs. Period. Thank you so much. So we are going to start exactly at 8 o'clock. So it will be a working dinner. So board members, go to the bathroom, get your food, come on back.
Thank you.
I think we need to make a change. I think we need to make a change. Thank you. Ms. Campos, I believe you have the consent motion?
I do. I move that the board approves the consent items in accordance with the recommended action for each item on the consent agenda, including bills previously authorized, certified, and approved for payment by the board secretary in the amount of $3,331,537.32 and the procurement transactions of the amount of $649,812.58.
We have a motion by Campos and a second, oh, may I have a second, please?
Alonso, second.
And a second by Ms. Alonso. Are there any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Martirano. Any discussion? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Alonso and a second by Martirano. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Caldwell Johnson, yes.
The vote is approved seven, nothing. Next on the agenda, we have our other items. The first item is G1, Personnel Recommendation, Receive, File, and Action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by OPM Architects for HVAC upgrades at South Union Elementary School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F1?
Dix, so moved.
Martirano, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Any discussion or does anyone have any questions?
Board members, you have four minutes.
So.
Chiefs.
Remind them that.
Yeah. And here's the thing, I would just say, this was really supposed to be just kind of a general introduction of onboarding, and really, it's more important to hear like either kind of three challenges, three things they're excited about than a whole bunch of flappy stuff, right?
So that's what, yeah, that's what we have in the roadmap.
Yeah, awesome. Is Matt part of the chief's session? Matt? Mr. Smith, if you'd like to come on up, are we going to do it here or where are we going to do it?
Yeah, they could probably come to the podium. Some consider it here.
Okay. We are starting in one minute. It may be Dr. Roberts and I, but we will be starting in one minute. Ms. Caldwell-Johnson?
I'm here.
Um, I sent you a text. We are going to make a change in the schedule, just so you're aware.
Okay. Oh, got it. Thank you.
We are really committed to staying on time. It's already 8:00 PM and 9:00 PM is our hard stop. So, Dr. Roberts, do you want to introduce the session?
Thank you, my chair, certainly. Good evening, board.
This evening, I am honored to have with us and to share with you with a commitment, a time of approximately seven to eight minutes per sharer. And that's the case of each of our chiefs. Uh, Matt Smith is going to be hard pressed to do that. But our chiefs are individuals who are part of our executive cabinet that convene weekly. And I'll share with you who these individuals are. Who's, who's driving?
Uh, I can drive. I believe I'm driving. There we go.
So for tonight's agenda with the presentation from the executive cabinet, there are three essential questions that we are asking, and that is, what worked well in semester one? What are three to five priorities for our second semester? For each of the chiefs and the work that is happening in their wheelhouse? And then what are some of the areas of growth as a self-reflective group, we're continuously looking at areas of growth? This is the composition of the cabinet, and while every member of the cabinet will not present, executive cabinet will not present this evening, each member of this executive cabinet that convenes weekly, they are doing really critical work. In terms of my work as superintendent of the district, what worked well, just want to highlight very quickly. Certainly a focus in strengthening the cohesion and cohesiveness of our team and making sure that we're working steadily towards becoming a healthy district leadership team. Focusing on our goals that are truly aligned to improve in our organizational health. And very critical for us is just the improvement of our school leaders and their investment in ensuring that over ask of them to make sure that they're spending about 70% of their time each day on the instructional core. It's critical. I have to say that there's with much excitement, 100% of our leaders are moving steadily towards that. As we think about within the superintendent's wheelhouse, this commitment to make sure that while we are making strategic decisions, our focus on ensuring that we are prioritizing organization culture by starting with the culture of the executive cabinet. We really build upon the sort of research and amazing thinking of the guru from the 1950s and 60s, Peter Drucker, who reminds us that culture eats strategy for breakfast. Essentially, before we can think about any strategic thinking and planning, we should revisit and focus on improving the culture of any organization. And so what we've done in that regard is to start to sort of systematize some of our processes, policies and procedures, provide clarity and create cohesiveness around our executive leadership cabinet. And also making sure that we're focused on building a healthy team. Because we want to make sure that we're grunging and anchoring all of our decisions in solid, credible and reliable research, this also includes really looking at a framework to drive our work. And a framework that we utilize comes from Patrick Lencioni's, one of his most sort of seminal works from The Advantage, where we looked at the six questions that they often suggest that should be acts of any executive leadership team or any organization. If you're going to create clarity, cohesiveness, and to create a healthy organization. And so we've started to answer each of those six questions. And today, to me, we've answered two of them, and we are on the verge as an executive cabinet of answering the third one. First two questions we've answered actually speaks to our mission. So we are aligned as a 11-member executive cabinet around why we exist. The reason we exist and 100% of decisions we make oftentimes comes back to us asking each order when we convene weekly, what are some actions we've taken within the last seven days that truly aligns to this mission that we've agreed upon? The second question we asked was really around how do we behave? And that question really speaks to what are the core values that drives the work that we do? Any high-functioning and high-performing executive team or organization must have a set of core values that really speaks to everything that they are intolerant of and what drives the work that they do. And the three core values that we have landed upon are equity and justice, empathy, and authentic collaboration. And at some point, I am happy to, or any member of this executive cabinet will be happy to expound on what those three core values mean to us. These are core values that hopefully will trickle down to the work that is happening across the district. In terms of semester two priorities, I listed a few there. I'll go through these at a very high level. I'm going to continue to prioritize within my wheelhouse instructional leadership. Want to make sure that we continue to prioritize really improving and strengthening the collaboration between a number of our external stakeholders, members of the legislature, our business community, our philanthropic community. It's a priority of not only myself, but every member of the executive cabinet. So I'm excited about making sure that that's the top of mind in semester two. Want to make sure that we continue to focus on our legislative priorities. In this case, our legislative priority, which is pre-K funding. And next, making sure that we work towards getting full funding for all their pre-K. Excited about that. And then certainly, in terms of a priority for second semester, you've heard of our team with a dynamic presentation this evening, and that's around safety, security and the well-being of all of our students and the adults who serve them. And again, building on one of the questions that was asked earlier, we are excited about our investment in sort of a much more sophisticated sort of set of infrastructure with regards to our impact-resistant flame, as well as our weapon detection system that you'll hear a lot more about, I'm sure, later on tonight. Areas of growth, of course, strengthening our alignment. We can continue to work on that. Strengthen our alignment around math and English curriculum that we have in place and aligning that to our GLEAM framework, which we've invested considerably in. And again, the GLEAM framework is really about providing an opportunity for those of us who are in the teaching and learning space to make sure that we are recognizing the value of students of color particularly, as well as students of varying cultural backgrounds and lived experiences, make sure we're meeting their needs. Want to improve our alignment around the, excuse me, practices and protocols around making sure that we are working diligently and with intentionality around the right student outcomes. And make sure that they are the measurable actions around our interim goals and guardrails, the work that we do each time that we are having a conversations with our data and assessment team. Or when we come into the public space where the board asks us questions around our goals and guardrails, we are continuing to look at those as areas of growth where we have to get better and we can improve. And finally, as an area of improvement and growth, again, we are still recovering from a major, we call it an event, that's a nice euphemism, that occurred again earlier last year. And so we are working diligently with our IT leaders and team to make sure we get to that space. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. So I take the next forty-five minutes.
Exactly.
Got it.
That is set the tone.
He was.
Thank you, team.
His pace was increasing, but yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I typically get my name and title out in about eight minutes, so this is going to be interesting. I will keep it super brief. I'm going to impress you tonight. So what's worked well for me as a associate superintendent of this school, you're primarily responsible for the operations side of the house. And so that doesn't mean that I don't engage in teaching and learning. I just do so from a different lens. And the priorities of my day are specifically around operations, athletics and facilities, activities, food and nutrition, transportation and technology information. So I am super fortunate that some of my colleagues and partners in this work are going to actually take some of their seven minutes and present to you a little bit more deeply. But I'm going to highlight some of their work because their work also is my work, and I'm super proud of what they do and how they get it done. So what's worked well, the hardening of our cybersecurity environment and our physical environment. And so there's a few bulleted points there to speak to that. You heard a little bit about it already earlier tonight. And you'll hear some more about it from Director Lisa Irie. In addition to that, what's worked well is the reimagining of education and reinvigorating schools kickoff this year. So we've got a number of tasks already completed, and the real work is really just beginning in our subcommittee work around rethinking how we actually serve children, serve staff and serve families in Des Moines Public Schools through the lens of facility planning. And so I'm super excited about that work. The opportunities are endless. The, the challenges are complicated. And this is the right committee to be working through that on a frequent cadence of almost meeting twice a month to get to a point where, and that doesn't include the homework and the assignments beyond that, to get to a point where we are pulling together a facility plan that is going to maximize and optimize dollars and shift those funding from infrastructure into programming, compensation and staffing. Three to five priorities, while safety and security initiatives are also an area of what's worked well, I just feel like it's always ongoing. It's never enough. There's always more that we can do, and that's going to continue to be a focus for the team and myself. We'll continue to look at cybersecurity recovery restoration opportunities, as well as enhance our video surveillance. And so we've got a lot of work being done in that area. And again, there's more conversations that can be had about that from some of my counterparts. But those are areas that were always, were just never, it's never enough. I'm sure you can understand that. Reimagining education and reinvigorating schools, again, this is also ongoing work. It's going to remain a priority not only for this upcoming semester, but for the next several years. And so it'll evolve and it'll be the next iteration of it. But we'll get better and better at it, and I'm really excited about the plan that this team is going to put forward. Transportation is also on a focus for this particular semester. It's never that it's not a focus, but it's being lifted up as a priority. We have a task force right now, a multi-departmental task force that is looking and uncovering every opportunity to enhance and improve our model of transportation services that includes partnerships with DART and partnerships with other private organizations. And so that's a really, really powerful team that's doing really, really good work. And areas of growth and opportunity, in every way I can describe, communication is the growth and the opportunity for myself specifically and that of our team. And that's everything from one-on-one conversations to coaching and support and development with my direct colleagues and partners and those that I serve, as well as departmental communication, district-wide communication, family communication, student communication, all the above, right? So it's everything that we talk about behind closed doors and everything we talk about in public spaces that has to get better. And we have to continue to improve in that regard in the as transparent and vulnerable and direct as possible so that we're inspiring and influencing folks to do better and be better every single day. So I'm learning a lot from those that I directly serve and support specifically in this, this new sort of challenge of operations and facilities. There's lots of incredibly brilliant and skilled individuals, and I'm learning a ton, and it's improving my communication on what's happening in our district.
Not bad.
No bad.
Just, I just want to take a comment. A question is, who do AEA's fall under?
Teaching and learning.
Okay, so that's a question for that. And then just thinking about the budget, the future conversations, one of the outstanding questions was the IT department evolution. Posts, there was a lot of conversation about investment. I think the board approved a significant investment. Maybe next time we come together, just understanding how that's evolved.
Yeah, and you'll get even some of those investment results from Lisa Irie here momentarily.
Does she? Oh my gosh, people are moving.
Good evening. I'm Shelley Bosovich, Executive Director of Student and Family Services. You see the org chart there. You met a couple of the directors of Student and Family Services this evening, Jake Troja and Ally Finley are two of our directors. I want to highlight in the org chart that you see here that each person has a primary area of responsibility. And then on top of that, there's another responsibility that is more of a district-supported thing. So Angie Constable, for example, you see right there, she's the Student Services Director for Early Access and Early Childhood. And she also serves as the Building Principal for Woodlawn. So every one of our people, every one of our directors have basically two kinds of, kinds of roles. Notice to the right of the org chart, I have three other people who do report to me who are not administrators. That's Missy Abbott with Health Services. She's a coordinator. Eleanor Short, who's the supervisor of the Welcome Center. And then Erin Jenkins, who is an administrative assistant, but she does our Medicaid billing for us, so. What we do, so we provide a variety of services that, as you can see, in general education, special education and direct supports to parents and families. We are the one department in the district who serves students from birth to 21. In fact, we are the one district in the state who serves students birth to 21. Those services that are provided to babies, infants and toddlers are services that are actually provided in the home directly to parents and helping them gain some skills and working with their, their infant or toddler. These are some of the job titles. I just wanted to put them out there so that you saw them. And when I did that, I thought, I am going to forget someone and there are some group of people, and I'm going to feel terrible about it, and I did. So student, student services coordinators did not make this list, but I have to tell you, they have a very important role. They work very closely with our building leaders, and they are integral in helping them develop and continue to enhance their MTSS system or their multi-tiered system of support. They do a lot of the work and support directly in buildings that you heard about tonight when Ally Finley and Jake Troja were speaking. So all of these people are the job titles when we're talking about Student and Family Services. So you'll see that there's special education, there's general education, there's alternative education, it's a variety. Most of our funds come from either special education, and Jackie, you were talking about the AEA, most of that is, much of that is flow-through from the AEA. That's for our support staff, or drop-out prevention. We have very few general ed dollars here. The Welcome Center and our nurses are, are probably the, the ones that I can think of right off the top of my head, and then portions of some other positions. So priorities, we have learned, the people in our department are highly skilled and highly educated and very sought after. Most of the people in our department have advanced degrees, and they have job opportunities in many, many other organizations. So we were facing a situation where we were losing people. They were leaving us, and then when they left us, it left a big hole. We had to bring people back up to speed and train them when they came in to know the Des Moines piece of that. So in talking with our people and doing a lot of interviews, we did both stay interviews and exit interviews, one of the things that they told us was that they really wanted, they were committed to their, we call it discipline, or their job title, they're really committed to that. And they wanted to make sure that they went deeper in that and that they continued to be leaders in that discipline, whether it's a school psychologist, a school social worker, whatever the case may be. So it was a priority, and it continues to be a priority, to make sure that we're, we've got specific learning plans for all of our disciplined groups and that we've got support plans for them as well. Another priority is tracking accelerated growth for students with disabilities. You see very often some of our state data around achievement. And there are times that some of our students with disabilities are not going to meet the proficient mark. We know that every single student can, however, make accelerated growth. So that is our goal with them, and we're working on trying to track that. It is very tedious because these are individual. One of the people on the team working on this right now said, when he is finished with this, he will be writing a book. And so I'm going to guess that it's going to be a bestseller. Implementing program reviews, like I told you, we have a lot of different areas. So community school coordinators are one of our groups, success case managers. Each one of our teams has put together a program, a program plan. And that program plan talks about the deliverables and the kinds of things that they would do. Now, they're providing reviews. Now, we haven't done it in this formal way before. So they're writing their program plans, and now they're sharing the data, and they're connecting their deliverables with the outcome data. We just finished the first round of that, and we have a ways to go. We're going to keep getting better at that. But it's really nice to see the team sharing together and being open about the work that they're doing and some of the barriers they're facing. Our goal, like everyone else, I think, in this district is ensuring a welcoming, inclusive, safe environment for students and staff. So some of our successes, first semester, what worked well? We do have a targeted professional development and support plan for almost every single one of our detailed job titles or disciplines there. And it is working well. We're getting feedback from schools that they're feeling like the services that they're getting has, has been a higher quality. So that's good. We're hearing from our staff, there's more job satisfaction, and they're happy with the things that they're learning and growing together. So we have them together more frequently now, and that also helps with that problem solving. There's a lot of case consultation and that kind of thing that they do. The program reviews, I just mentioned that, and that they're seeing the link between the deliverables and the outcomes. And then the safety team and the social emotional learning teams, you heard from them in detail tonight. So I won't go into more detail about that. The Welcome Center, we have made some process improvements in the Welcome Center. One of the things that we were finding is that we have more resettlement agencies representing students and helping them. And they weren't always understanding what the requirements are by state code and federal law and that sort of thing. So we've had a series of meetings and bringing in the resettlement agency people. And I think there's a really good understanding now. They walked away with a kind of a guideline. It's a flow chart. I was going to say checklist, but it's a flow chart of the kinds of things that they would need to have when they come in, what's required of them. So that has been a really good thing that's happened this first year, first semester. So second semester, right? Second semester, we're going to, the one area that we don't have built, professional learning, is for our associates. They're hard to pull from the building, so we need to do it virtually. And so given the constraints that we have now after the cyber tech, we're needing to rebuild that professional learning suite that we have, and we're hoping to use the HR management system. Jackie, I'm looking at you because I know you're, you're timing me. I don't feel that much pressure, but I'm going to beat him, I'm afraid. And so the SCL curriculum that we talked about is being vetted right now by several of our schools, or not, not quite yet, but will be out there and be vetted. Those are things we're working on. The School Culture and Climate Summit that many of you have attended in the past, we're bringing it back. But it's being rebranded and sort of reinvigorated with a focus on cultural responsiveness. So we're super excited about that. It's going to be August 12th and 13th, I think, are the dates. So you will be getting more information about that, but we're. information about that, but we're really working hard on making sure that that comes through. It's a lot that goes into that, but we get a lot of payback from that, so it's great for our staff. And then formalizing transitions, we're working on the transitions, our teams are working now, the transition from preschool to kindergarten, from sixth to, excuse me, fifth to sixth, and then eighth to ninth grade, trying to have more of a formalized process that is standardized across the district, and you heard about the C-stag training that is ending tomorrow is the last day for that. So what kinds of things, areas of growth? We, I mentioned that we have the professional learning for all of our discipline groups, and we have roles and responsibilities, and we use that to develop the training. One of the things that we're finding is, we aren't collaborating as well in the buildings as we should be, and so we're going to be bringing some people together and be working on teaming more. We do have a lot of people in our department, and they're deployed to the schools, and so we know that they each have a lot to offer, but unless we're teaming and working collaboratively, we're not really maximizing that. There's some overlap that can occur, and some things that can, some gaps that can be missed there, so we're working hard on that. We're working hard and will continue to look at embedding social, emotional learning within our system, and that is, you know, for our adults too, you heard quite a bit about that tonight, I think. And then student attendance is something that we're working on. We know that student attendance is not nearly what we want it to be, we're working on a plan right now, our success case managers are putting some things together for that. So these are all areas for growth, and probably things that we're going to continue to look at improvements over time.
Thanks. Just a quick question, is it vertical integration? So when you talk about teaming?
Yeah.
So a BFL works better with a success case worker, works better with a community school coordinator?
Yes, that is exactly it. In fact, that's a perfect example.
Good evening, Board. Tim Schott, Executive Director for Teaching and Learning, and my role this year has expanded to include middle school and high school, which is great. I'm thrilled to tell you about the Teaching and Learning team, and I started a stopwatch, how about that?
Ah!
You'll see on the slide here, we have 10 directors. Eight of them are organized by level, so we have principal supervisors and curriculum directors, and the eight of them are organized by level, meaning there are elementary partners, there are middle school partners, and there are high school partners. The other two directors in Teaching and Learning are Jessica Gobertie, who you know because she's been here several times, Director of Central Academy and Advanced Placement, Advanced Learning, and also Tasha Brown, the Director of CTE and Central Campus. So those are our 10 fabulous directors. We do have, as you noticed there, a vacancy currently in the middle school curriculum director role. Oh, you skipped one, Matt, thank you. We exist to build confidence in leadership and instruction, that's simple. That's why we exist as a team. Here's how we do it. We do it through three big buckets. We design the instructional program, everything from the Career and Technical Education Program to our ELL program for multilingual students, to science and math pathways all the way through. We also lead quite a bit of professional development with principals, with associate principals, with instructional coaches, and also even with teachers during district-directed time, and we coach and supervise principals, APs, and of course, the members of our team directly. Ms. Norris, I should mention, because you asked about AEA's earlier, several of the AEA partners are actually members of our team, and they serve in the role essentially of curriculum coordinators, not all of them, but several of them.
I think it'd be helpful, as we talk about budget impacts, when we get to budget conversations, how some of the changes may impact DNPS.
Absolutely, absolutely. So thank you for bringing that up. You know quite a little bit about our instructional framework, Dr. Roberts just mentioned it a moment ago, so I'm not going to go into great details. However, I will just add a little bit more context. We refer to it often as GLEAM, and the GL, and the E, and the A, and the M are specific to instructional moves that can be improved, monitored, supported with our fantastic teaching staff, but there are other parts to it, which this graphic sort of illustrates, which is starting on the left, this idea of mindset. Both the mindset of the teacher to know that they have the power, they have the efficacy to make a change for each and every student and to meet each and every student's needs, but also, the next section there is an emphasis on planning. Planning for instruction is super key, and planning for GLEAM instruction in particular, we're placing quite a little bit of energy into this year and in future years, because that's key to ensuring that the experience the student has actually meets those GLEAM indicators. And then it flows through to actions by the teacher and the experience that the student has. Recent success, we, as I believe you know, I just want to summarize, we have recovered for the most part pandemic learning loss in pretty much all areas, and we've more than recovered pandemic learning loss in certain areas and with certain student subgroups, which we're pleased about, but we've got a lot more work to do, as you know. We are also getting quite a little bit of growing and fruitful traction with our instructional framework, which is new this year. So we're talking about GLEAM, that's all brand-new this year, we've put quite a little bit of energy into it. First semester, for example, we had embedded professional learning with all our principals and associate principals on the GLEAM instructional framework in our school, so observing our own classes, our own teachers, our own instruction. And then we've also had success recently with our ELL program modifications and the instructional plan, parts of it, that have yielded success for our multilingual learners, which you also know a bit about from recent board reports. How am I doing? 424, not bad. Opportunities moving forward, it's important that we build confidence in each and every adult in the area of instruction, each and every adult. There's only so many of us, there's a whole lot of them. So building capacity to do that is really important through professional development from us, but also professional development colleague-to-colleague, peer-to-peer, through PLCs and various other ways that teachers in particular work with each other. Then secondly, we have pockets of excellence in this district. We have pockets, whether it's schools, sometimes grade levels within schools, and we have an opportunity for growth to make those pockets be not just pockets, but system-wide, to reduce the variance essentially between our very strongest grade levels or schools and those that need some additional support. And then our last opportunity is, we are always faced with maximizing student learning with dwindling resources, and that's not just state resources, AEA resources, Ms. Norris that you mentioned, but also with our own internal team that has shrunk over the last few years, and as I mentioned on the outset, we currently have a vacancy. So those are our opportunities moving forward, 5 minutes, 45 seconds.
Thank you, and I think just for board members, I should have framed it. The goal of this was partially onboarding and just exposure to the different roles and the oversight of what they do, and then from there, if there's additional questions, board members can talk to Dr. Roberts to dig a little deeper, but this was an attempt at also just hearing more about what's current on the minds of the district leaders.
Suzy drives her own show.
Hi, I'm Suzy Tolman, Chief of Talent and Personnel. I started with the first slide around our guardrails because that is our area of focus, and we know that if we can do well in these areas, then we're making a difference for students in a different way. I always say our job is to impact student achievement, and even though we may not be the boots on the ground that are directly in the classrooms, I truly believe that we can make a difference, it's just doing it in a little bit of a different way. So we're on track with our guardrails and meeting our guardrails, which is a great celebration for our department. So this is a pretty high-level overview of our department. I have two directors that help support and lead the work. One is Peter LeBlanc, he's our Director of Talent, and the other is Sheila Mason, she's our Director of Personnel, and they both have a team of managers and executive assistants that help support the work in their area, and I'll dig into that a little bit further. You also see three standalone positions off to the side. They do report directly to me, and there's a reason why they aren't embedded in with Peter's team or Sheila's team, and I'll explain that in a little bit in a further slide as well. One of the things I do want to mention, however, is when I first came to the Talent and Personnel Department, there wasn't a talent portion of it, it was really just personnel, and there were two directors that helped support in the department, and they were busy and immersed in the day-to-day work. By having now a Director of Talent, we've actually able to be very strategic and planful around recruitment and retention efforts. Not that it didn't happen previously, but when you have everything else, it made it really hard to get ahead of the work. So this is Peter LeBlanc, our Director of Talent, and his team, and I just listed out the areas of responsibility. What I would highlight is, he and his team, like I said, do a lot of the work around planning and being strategic and laying the groundwork for how we treat and support employees. And not that the whole department and the whole team aren't a part of that, we are, but we need individuals that have the ability to really build out our systems, build out our programming, build out our supports, and I think one of the things we've been able to do is give a lot of individual touches, which wasn't happening previously, which isn't easy to do when you have 5,000 employees, but I'll have to say that we do a pretty darn good job, not that there isn't always area for growth, there certainly is. So Peter leads a lot of our employee orientations for all employees, the hiring process, what that experience is for all employees, and also just building those career pathways to making sure that we have individuals that are on the bench and ready when we do have vacancies. As far as Sheila Mason, this is her team. We've organized the Personnel side of the department along with our Leadership and Learning friends. They have networks of elementary, middle, and high school, and so we aligned to make sure that our support was similar to what principals are seeing, and honestly, that creates a lot more efficiencies and it eliminates confusion out in the field. Before, you might have to contact 10 different people if you wanted to know something about a job description or what to do for employee conduct, or maybe if you had an evaluation. Now you have a point of contact, whether you're a building leader or whether you're a department leader, you just contact that one person and we'll answer all questions for you, and if we don't have the answers, we hunt it down so that leaders aren't pulled away from job one, which is helping to improve the learning environment for students, that we are doing more of that work instead and taking that lift off of leaders. And I think from a lot of the, oh, when I meet individually with leaders and the feedback I get, they love their personnel managers, I have great relationships with them. Another benefit of that is, too, they're tightly connected with principal supervisors, so that helps eliminate any inefficiencies too, so they know directly who to go to if we need any help or support or assistance, or the other way around as well. And then you can see all the process oversight. I mean, we've got lots of things we're responsible for in our department. Each manager and their assistant oversee the processes and have the oversight. I'm going to talk about our priorities later, which is going to help us in some of these areas, but lots of things going on that we're responsible for. And then these are the three positions that were off to the side that do report directly to me, and part of the reason for it is, is because these individuals impact our entire department and organization. We have a lot of big, oh, areas of focus like staffing and allocations, negotiations, our comprehensive agreements and handbooks that we work collaboratively with other departments and our unions to make updates or changes, anything around compensation, salary schedules, policies, procedures, all of those things. So we make sure that we're coordinating as a team so that we're aligned for our department and that we're communicating regularly out into the field, some of these big buckets that will eventually, you know, impact our leaders in our schools. Now, I said first semester priorities, but these also have been some huge successes for our departments and things that are going very well. We've had just a very strong emphasis on hiring, not simply just because of our guardrails, but also we know that we need an adult in front of students for their support and consistency on a daily basis. We do have a high fill rate, and I know it doesn't feel like that, and I'll talk about that a little bit on the next slide as far as challenges go, but when we're talking about building-based positions, we have a pretty good fill rate in buildings. And preschool, by the way, I was looking it up while she was talking, at the podium has one vacancy. That's probably one of our areas, along with high school, that have the largest fill rate in the district. We also have-
Can I ask a question about fill rate?
Sure.
Is that fine? Can you, because I just heard this, and I wonder if this is valid, and some of the discrepancy is that if there's a position that's open, and then you decide if it doesn't get filled, but then you decide, maybe we don't really need it because we want to try to fill other places, and so you take it completely away, it's not an option. Is that counted in this fill rate, or does that happen often where there's a position posted and then it's decided that you're not going to have it posted anymore? Is that accounted for in this number, or is that something totally different?
Well, it is. So what's accounted for in this number are the actual positions that we don't have a teacher for, and I would say primarily, a majority of them are like intervention positions. So we prioritize classroom positions, intervention positions. There were more vacancies, we didn't have anyone, you know, to fill those. Now, there are times where we do what we call an employer-initiated transfer, and we're moving an employee from one position to another, but that sometimes is based more on enrollment, meaning if there was an increase in a building and a need, and there was a decrease in a building over here, sometimes we do move the employee. We try to make every effort to move them back to their original position, but sometimes it doesn't exist if there aren't, you know, maybe the students that they would support because enrollment is so low, but sometimes we do move them back. So I think to answer your question, yes, they would be in the vacancies.
Okay, so there's not-
If the position remained and it was vacant.
Right, but then are there times where sometimes we post positions and then decide we no longer need them anymore, or no, that does not happen?
It could happen, but I would say not very often.
Thank you.
Yeah. We also have been doing a lot of work on improving our employee orientation. We've collected a lot of data to help inform some of the changes and adjustments that we've made, so we have worked to build some things in to make it easier for teachers or any other employee to transition into their position, to have all the resources, materials, things that they need. So that is ongoing work based on what we collect from stay interviews and exit interviews, but data does always drive that, and we also work with leaders to hear about, you know, what their needs are and what more we can be doing to help with that. And then a lot of our pipeline development, we are working to whomever is coming into our system, whether it is a volunteer, a student teacher, a guest educator, who are our substitutes, that we are making more of a concerted effort on the front end to develop relationships, to have touchpoints with them. So like for student teachers, we've been having meetings to talk with them, get to know them, help them get acclimated to the system, know what our, you know, hiring process looks like, help them with some of those things to be more efficient. Leaders conduct observations, and we take that information so they don't have to do it through the hiring process, anything we can do to streamline and make it easier. We hire about 50% of our student teachers, and of course, we'd like to hire more, so we put a big emphasis there for our guest educators, our subs. We've been doing professional development and training on some of the things that we're hearing back from them that they're struggling with, so that we're providing a higher level- that they're struggling with so that we're providing a higher level of support because we want to keep individuals with us because we know that they're our future teachers. And then of course, we've developed all kinds of pathway programs for our employees. If you're an associate, a campus manager, an office manager, you want to become a teacher, we have a pathway for you. If you want to become a leader in technology, we have a pathway for you. So we, that's what the Talent Team has been building out, which we didn't previously have the ability to do because we just didn't have hands on deck. And then of course, the last thing I'm like so super excited about is the Human Resources Management System. This is a long time coming. Oh my gosh, it's a huge celebration. And all those processes that you see that we're responsible for, we'll have everything under one umbrella. And so when you think about the employee experience or the leaders or administrators' experience, it'll be so streamlined and efficient. You know, I'm going to be coming back here at the beginning of the year and smiling because I'll get a focus efforts on a lot of other things than the nuts and bolts kind of stuff, along with the teammates. So we are just like so super excited and it connects very well with our friends in business and finance. So we'll create some efficiencies as far as data and information for our employees. So more to come on that, but we're learning things now and beginning to roll that out with our team. And then here are our challenges or maybe our opportunities for growth, I should have said. Employee retention, we've lost about 250 to 300 teachers every year. And just the time and effort, I mean, we're pouring into our staff and the training that they received. And a lot of good folks with a lot of good training and skills and experience, sometimes going elsewhere, whether it's for career advancement opportunities, sometimes it's for compensation, other times it's for childcare. I think those were our top three reasons for those who gave us feedback. So we've been taking that information and working with building leaders and department supervisors on how can we get to that more concretely on, with the individuals that have the relationships with staff so that we're making sure that there isn't something that we're missing based on the data that we're collecting and that we can make adjustments when we need to throughout the year to better support our staff.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
What percentage, just off the top of your head, do you feel like are going to other districts versus are leaving the profession? We've heard a lot of both, like they're leaving the profession and they're going to other districts. Just ballpark number off the top of your head or?
I don't know if I can give a ballpark number, but what I do know is that isn't a number one reason why individuals are leaving our district. In fact, it's not even in the top five. I can tell you that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I ask one thing just before you, you move on to your next point? Going back to the pathways, career pathways that are available for people, not just for teachers, but for anyone else seeking to advance, can you talk about maybe some of the options that are available or how that is communicated to staff?
Sure. So we just sent out communication. Usually we send it out to all staff in an email is how we've sent some of the information out to employees. I'll just give you a recent example, like we have what's called Red Pathway. We partnered with Grand View University and it's where, it's our Para-educator-to-teacher program. The individuals are invited into, we have an application process. And then we select individuals based on the information that they provided. So we'll have this year 10 seats available. There'll be two cohorts that we'll be going through that they can participate in that programming and that we provide an opportunity to get your degree in education. We also have the Associate-to-Teacher Pipeline where we're working with Grand View, Upper Iowa and William Penn. It's a four-year university degree program that we're able to invite individuals in. We have 23 associates. We would like to include more, but of course, you know, that always comes down to funding. That would be another example of something that we have in place. And we also put a Blue ED program for any of our leaders that want to go on to get, you know, a central office license or superintendent license that we would have available to move. Now, given that's not for a teaching program, but that would be another example I would give of some of the pathways that we've been building out for employees.
So, so, so?
So, so, I'm sorry. In, I guess when you get someone's resume and perhaps they're not applying to be a teacher or an associate, if the person perhaps is applying for like an entry-level job, they're an immigrant or a refugee, do you ever, or has the district made it a point perhaps to look at people's resumes and see what kind of background those individuals might have that could potentially have interest in education? I, I say this because I feel like there are a lot of people that are in the district that are working in entry-level jobs that have extensive education, probably more than you or I together. But they just don't know how to begin advancing in the district.
Yeah, I would say that's probably an area where we could do better. We work closely with, like Peter and his team with building leaders. And a lot of times they know staff that have expressed interest and share that information with us where we can do some personal outreach. However, when employees provide us the information, we do look at everything. And if we think that there's other opportunities, whether, you know, there's, we have internships or, or other things like that for things that might be outside of wanting to be a teacher, but maybe other areas in the organization. They work closely with the personnel managers and department leaders in transitioning some of that information. But of course, that's an area that's always has room for improvement. It's a little newer for us. We've had a lot of things established on the certified side. And now we're working to build out more things on the classified side for employees, if that's what you're-
So I'm going to just wrap this section up because I think part of this is as more questions are evolving, then we can engage Dr. Roberts in longer conversations. Is there anything else, Susie, that you wanted to be sure to cover?
Just the remaining vacancies area of challenge. If you layer on top of that absenteeism, it does create challenges for buildings. So when you hear about vacancies or not there being coverage, that would be the other challenge. Last two things, out-of-state recruitment. We are actually being declined to participate in, in events out-of-state because they're saying, I'm sorry, we need to focus in on our area and supporting our schools. So that's a new challenge that's come up for us. And then last, of course, is funding in ways that we can retain, incentivize all those things, things we continue to problem solve and work on.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
While we're doing the next transition, board members, I need a little feedback. Obviously, we've bit off more than we could chew in this evening with the goal of trying to have fewer nights of board meetings. So we have one topic that we have to talk about. We can either stay a little bit later, which is not ideal, I think, or we could do a call next week. So we had planned not to have a work session. We could do a call for 30 to 45 minutes. It could be virtual if that is something that people would like to entertain. I just need a, give me thumbs up, thumbs down. Where's your head?
You'd like to do that virtually? Is that the idea?
We, that is an option. So it's either, how about this for clarity, stay until 9:30 or have a call next week?
Stay.
Stay. Okay. All right. Hi.
Hey.
All right. Back to you. Thank you.
Absolutely. Good evening. This is the Business and Finance Department. And the way we have structured this department is we have financial services, employee services and procurement. In the financial services, we have Erica Armstrong, who's the controller. And she does everything related to the actual financials, closing of the books and everything. And Kevin is the Director of Planning and Analysis, which is budgeting, forecasting and everything related to that. So when I had joined the district, we had one CPA in the entire Business and Finance Department, which was me. And there was hardly any accountants. So one of the first things that I decided is if it's a finance department, we need to have more CPAs and more accountants. So I don't recruit anyone in my department unless the person is at least an accountant. If you don't know debit and credit, you can't be part of Business and Finance. So that is one change I brought about. And instead of having just the controller do both budgets and actuals, we have split that role between two different people. A year and a half, two years back, Employee Services, which was part of HR, which is now called Talent and Personal, was added to Business and Finance. And Procurement Services, which was part of Operations, and some of you may remember Bill Good, who was the CEO at that point in time, his department needs to take care of that. And then we have Pam, who's my admin assistant, and Rosie, whom all of you know very well. So how is the department being structured? So Financial Services, as I was mentioning, has got planning and analysis. We got accounting and then we have treasury. Under accounting, we also have accounts payable and under treasury, we have accounts receivables. And then there's a person who manages grants. And then we have a communications and a continuous improvement person. So that is the financial services umbrella. Under the Employee Services, we have benefits, which is the health benefits and all different benefits, risk management, which is your insurance, workman's comp, all those things related to that, and then compensation and payroll. Under procurement, we obviously have the purchasing department. And then we have board support, which is Rosie. So under the controllership, under the accounting manager, we have Ben, who is a manager. He's, so Erica is a CPA and Ben is a CPA. And then we have accounts payable, we have GL accountant. And then we have Sharon, who supports all the school buildings and all the bookkeepers and office managers. And under the planning and analysis, we have the grant accountants, which is your title money, all the different grants that we get. We have an enterprise accountant, which takes care of food and nutrition, metro, all the different enterprise things. And then we have internal services and SPED, which is Elizabeth. And then a financial decision analysis support person, which is all the different programs that the district runs, whether it is like DOP, TAG, any of those things. Then Emily, who is the treasury analyst, has the AR technicians. She's also the treasury manager. So whenever we have excess cash, she and me sit down and decide to invest based on the district policy. Then we have Cassandra, who's a communications manager, who does a great job in making presentations and helping us, keeping us on track, also almost like a project manager. We have Emma, who's a continuous improvement coordinator. So one thing that we did was, prior to my coming, lean had been implemented in the district, but we had used it very sparingly. And, and Emma was the lean coordinator and she was part of our team. So I have entasped her with trying to go through the different processes so that we can streamline it, remove inefficiencies. And then we have Laurie, who is the grant writing specialist. I jumped. So Employee Services has the payroll manager, who has to do the payroll for 5,000 employees. And we have almost 24 to 26 pay cycles for different groups. So it comes to almost around 70, 75 pay cycles in a year. Megan is the payroll manager and she has a payroll analyst, a coordinator and two technicians below that. Then we have Sherry and Rhonda, who are the benefit specialists. So your health benefits signup, IPers, IPers-related stuff, everything is handled by these two people. Under the procurement, Joanne, whom some of you have met, we have tried to have a person supporting a particular department. So we have Derek, which supports central office, TNP, Business and Finance, activities. We have Sarah, who takes care of construction, Brett, who takes care of nutrition. So that is how we have structured the procurement department, an analyst supporting a group or a group large enough, if it's smaller groups, so that they have a dedicated person there. So what has gone well? Automation. We have improved the professional services agreement forms. Anything which does not require an RFI or RFP, which is under $3,500, was a very manual process. The common theme that you would see, that I have tried to implement in my department is automation. And I believe the more you automate, the more it frees up the time for people to do analytical work, less errors, less audit questions, all those things have a direct benefit. One thing that I have always told my team is, as a business and finance, it is very difficult for us to increase staff when we are having budget reductions. So how do you handle the work efficiently and effectively without increasing staff? More automation. That is, that is a focus that I have tried to do that. So another thing related to automation was transitioning some of payroll to pay assignments versus web form. So it was more of a qualtrics thing. We put it under web form, so it has got proper workflow things going on. Communication. The business office, it looks kind of strange, says we work well together. When I joined the district, sorry to use the word appalled, but I was appalled the way everyone was working in their own silos. No one really wanted to work together as a team. Today, we are one cohesive team, even though other departments have become part of our department. So that is definitely improvement. We have introduced a few programs under the Vector Solutions. So one is the Public Purpose Policy, which the board has approved, gift law, business ethics policy. So we have introduced a few policies. We have actually internally designed, edited, recorded and released it because Vector did not have those different solutions available for imparting training. The payroll website, which was integrated under Business and Finance, we have shown it separately because a lot of employees have questions related to payroll. So it's created more visibility. As part of the compensation work that we had done last year, we have created more visibility as far as the DBM and other things goes. So if someone wants to understand which DBM they are, what is a pay band, they can go and see that. We have updated procedure manuals, which had not been looked into a long time. We have held trainings on P-card usage, travel, a lot of travel happens and people at times are not aware of what the district policy is. So we have tried to do a lot of training on that. And when, when we say ensuring under compliance block rules, these are rules which really blocks anyone from posting to a particular account. So when we submit our annual financials to the state, we have, these two have 3,000 to 5,000 errors which used to be spit out by the state. So creating these block rules reduces those numbers of errors, which is again adding to the efficiency of the department. So what are the priorities? I mentioned I'm looking very seriously into automation. The ACFO document, which some of you may have seen, it's a 140, 150-page document, which has got not just the financial statement, but a lot of verbiage. To give you an idea, if there is a table where we change a number and if it has that same table or those numbers coming in 10 different places, someone had to manually go and change in all those 10 places. Not the best use of anyone's time. What we are doing is trying to automate it. So once we automate it, if you make a change in one place, it gets incorporated everywhere. The other thing is this work was largely done by the auditors. So auditors would do it. They would give it to us and then we would check it. And then if there were changes, we would inform them. So this is not the most efficient way of doing it. This has to be brought in-house. This we have to do. If you decide to change an auditor, the work goes away. I don't like the situation of being dependent on a third party like this. So we are working on that. Something I heard loud and clear from the different groups was the budget processor. And I'm not talking about the budget which is presented to the board, but the budget which is shared with the different- which is shared with the different departments. So we are doing an RFP to automate it, to involve the business much more in the budget setting process than what has historically been done. And both these items, whether it is the ACFOR or the budget automation process, no one, absolutely no one in the state of Iowa has done it so far. And they're looking at DMPS, that if the Business and Finance of DMPS is successful, we are going to implement it. No one has had the courage to really move forward in them. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed that I'm successful. Absolutely. Two minutes? Two minutes? Travel form? We are finalizing a new travel form. All the department processes are being documented. So if there's a turnover, someone can pick it up from that person versus starting from scratch. We are training the procurement analysts, cross-training them, so that if one person leaves, the other one can pick it up and go. Compliance, GASB 96. We have new GASBs which come every year. So we have to implement them. So 96 is what we implemented this year, which is related to leases. We are trying to get in compliance with the grant requirements, a master list of Business and Finance deadlines. State dictates a lot of different timelines, and we have to follow them. And if we don't follow them, we can get into trouble. So we are developing a master list for that. So what are the areas for growth? And I think this is the last slide. We want to really revamp the employee travel, especially when it comes to the June closing. In June, for the last few years, we have a lot of people from district who travel because they're either trying to exhaust the title money, or there is a certain program, I think the GLEAM training kind of a thing. We are trying to reduce the training in June. We're working with Tim and team because since GLEAM, people have come over here, and we are implementing GLEAM, hopefully the travel would come down. We're trying to improve the departmental building budget process, and that RFP thing, which I mentioned, which I'm doing with budget, is going to help on that. Communication between different departments, we're trying to work on that. Maintaining fidelity in our systems, as well as compliance with the grant and entitlement programs. And what I would mention over here, the number of questions that our district was asked in Q1 of this year were more than twice the number of questions the district has been asked in the last two years combined. And there is speculation whether the increase in the number of questions by the DE to us is because they're expecting a federal audit, and they're trying to tick and tie everything, or is it because there has been change of guard in DE, and they're getting into more details? But whatever be the reasons, it has taken up a lot of time. That is all that I have from my end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was one while we're transitioning, so come on up whoever's next. You called up mental health and staff, and I just thank you for saying that.
Yes. So we are working, Jack, what we're doing is even as part of the health and benefit program, we are trying to work together to see how we can improve on that.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Good evening. I'm going to be brief for these next few slides because I'm just representing Dave Berger. Dave Berger couldn't be here tonight. So Dave is our Executive Director of Facilities and Operations, and so Dave would do this in about 45 seconds. And so I'm going to operate as Dave tonight. You can see just a quick overview of a very high level of the folks that he actually directly serves and supports. You've got Capital Improvements, Facility Services, and Custodial Services, and then, of course, there's a Capital Improvement Specialist in Sarah Holland. The newest hire to our team right there is William Givens, who supports 236 custodial staff. The numbers pretty much speak for themselves when you look at the amount of things that this department cares for and supports and serves, and many of them were mentioned tonight in terms of snow removal and making sure that it's a safe place to show up to. So what worked well? Security initiatives. Obviously, you're going to hear again some of the repeats that I lifted up because I directly serve and support these folks as well. And so I won't dive into that too much, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Capital Improvement Procurement Cycle, again, we implemented in an early release that has generated increased better interest and actually lower rates for us in terms of our bids, what's been great. And of course, there's been a Dedicated Athletics and Activities Infrastructure Initiative, focused on a strategic plan for athletics and activities to build out a vision for how we're going to serve through the lens of facilities. Some of the top priorities, again, security initiatives, those are never going to go away, they're always going to be our top priorities. Improve communications and efficiencies for the same reasons that I lifted up earlier, because we have to do better by the individuals that we serve, the groups, the families, and the entire community that we serve. So internal and external communication has to continue to be a focus and a priority for us to move forward. And of course, capital improvement planning. We are utilizing a new construction management at-risk project delivery methodology. Many of you probably know about that because you approved it in the Lincoln Project. And so that actually is, we're excited about that new methodology and what that's going to do for us, as well as expanding access for building leaders to building specific needs assessments. But what's that is referencing is workflow development, and how are we responding to requests and giving access to that visual of whether or not a work request is being completed versus not being completed, and what's the timeliness of that? So there's a lot of automation, to use Shashank's term, taking place in that regard. And of course, some accelerated design implementation of activities and athletics and improvements. Again, that's, there was a lot of work done on the front end several years ago, that's being put into action, and actually some very strategic plans moving forward to make sure that that is a comprehensive vision that is being delivered and executed on. Areas of growth, staff development opportunities. I want to point out the second one there specifically, expanding access to employment opportunities for current district students. This department, as many are doing so, but this one specifically is focusing on making sure that we are offering students opportunities for employment, both while they're in school with us and after school when they graduate. We have to be about buying the product that we are actually delivering, and it is a great product. As you heard tonight of these students we're speaking, they are brilliant, they are skilled, and the more students that we can hire in our, while they're here with us, the better opportunities to keep them for a long term. And customer service, how we're serving the schools and the school leaders and the department leaders is always going to be a focus of the operations team. I'll invite Lisa Irie, Director of Technology, Information, and Printing Services.
Thank you. Where is transportation? Did I miss that? Is that under operations?
It's, actually, it's on its separate department.
Got it.
So.
Thank you.
Good evening. Start the clock. So I'm Lisa Irie. I'm the Director of Technology and Cybersecurity. My pronouns are they, them, theirs. As you can see here, the mission of Technology and Printing Services is to collaborate and provide leadership and planning for the effective use and strategic use of emerging technologies. The org chart is there for you to take in. A couple of things I want to lift up. First up is Ms. Norris, the question about AEA. This also impacts my Printing and Mailing Services team as we utilize the van delivery service provided by the AEA to transport, print, and mail throughout the district. And secondly, as we move through the overview of my department, just bear in mind that my purview focus is on operational technology and equipment. So that's, that's me. Semester one, what worked well? Cyber recovery is nearing completion. We just passed the one-year mark. We celebrated with a snow day, which I had ordered from Mother Nature, so she delivered. The team was not very grateful and wanted to return the gift, but you just, you have to take it. So that was divine timing. Our team has, as you know, has been working tirelessly since last January 9th to overhaul, reevaluate, re-architect, and restructure every piece of network infrastructure, hosted services, backups, telephony, et cetera. What I will say is, we are between 90 and 95% restored. The remaining aspects are, is a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure that we have the proper redundancy, resiliency, to be able to recover if an attack were to happen again. But all sort of outward-facing services have been restored to a very high degree, and we're just tying up some loose ends. We've onboarded cybersecurity services, so to speak to the investments that, that we made over the last several months. One of those is a Virtual Chief Information Security Officer, which we onboarded in October, and the implementation of Managed Detection and Response Services. So this is a 24-by-7 Security Operations Center that is watching our environment and the events that are happening all the time, and they are alerting folks on our team when something rises to a certain level, then we get involved to investigate and remediate.
Can I, real quick, I just want to point out just a quick example of that. I did get a call a month ago, two months ago, that someone in another country had my 17-digit passcode and could not actually bypass our multi-factor authentication, which is my facial recognition. So investments like that are happening all the time, but that's a very quick, you know, ground-level understanding of what the protection this investment is offering us, 17-digit passcode. And so facial recognition is a great thing.
Yeah. We kicked off an eight-month, $7 million federally subsidized project to modernize our entire network hardware infrastructure in all of our facilities to bring better connectivity, denser coverage, so more devices can connect, better security, and then the ability to manage that network in service to our district goals. Estimated completion date will be next, next August. Our print shop is continually expanding their services, and I'd say the largest celebration is the self-printing of our K-12 district curriculum. Next slide. Our top priorities for semester two. So we're planning to finalize the risk assessment, which is the first part of our program with our VCISO, and then begin addressing items identified through that assessment. We're currently assessing alternatives and comparing vendors to select a new backup and recovery system that will meet our needs for redundancy, resiliency, and restoration. We're publishing an update to our software procurement policy that will require us to review a vendor's set of data security and student and staff privacy before that that software can be purchased and brought into our environment. And we are switching vendors for our print shop equipment, which is a major move, but we're going to be taking advantage of cost savings, increased service metrics, as well as expand our ability to bring color printing to our curriculum so students can see the colors. So it's going to add a whole new dimension. And to talk about our areas of growth, is it right? Cybersecurity program maturity. So as we work with our virtual CISO, as we develop more enhancements to our work with our Security Operations Center, we're also performing staff augmentation and training to bring them up to speed and focus heavily on our disaster recovery, which goes hand-in-hand with business continuity. These things are, at the ground level rooted in technology and IT, but require the entire organization to come together to make those plans and to execute if the need arises. And then the last thing that I threw on last minute but didn't make it to the final presentation is artificial intelligence. It's here, it's being used already. This is also another example where IT can, can lead the organization, but also it's an organization-wide decision and judgment. So we have a few engagements coming up where we're going to explore some of the efficiencies that AI can bring us, but also investigate the threats on the landscape as well, so that we can make safe, sound, secure decisions about bringing that on to DMPS. So six and a half minutes.
Thank you, Lisa.
Phil?
Mr. Raider? Do you want to drive this?
Sure. Thank you. Timer?
You got it.
I'm ready to go. So good evening. By way of introduction, just a quick reminder of who's on the Communications Team at the School District. In addition to myself, Amanda Lewis, our Senior Communications Specialist, Adam Rohr, who is our graphic designer, Kyle Nicely, our video producer, and John Lemmons, our chief photographer, are the five members of the Communications Team for the School District. Rather than talking about what worked the first semester, I wanted to share what the work is and the range and scope of the things that the five of us on the Communications Team do day in and day out on behalf of the School District. First, and this is in no particular order, some days some are more important than others, some days they're all important. But first is managing our online presence, specifically the School District's website. DMschools.org is virtually the front door of the School District, and it's certainly our largest door in the School District. We average about 30,000 visitors on any given day during the school year. Second is managing our social media presence. Our primary platforms are Facebook with about 51,000 followers, Twitter, or X, or whatever you want to call it today, with a little over 18,000 followers, and we broke the 10,000 follower mark on Instagram, which I should note is our most engaged social media platform by far, period, full stop. We get 20 times as much engagement on Instagram as we do on the other platforms. We produce The Week at DMPS, which is, as the name might imply, our weekly newsletter. It goes out most Fridays, probably 45, 46 weeks out of the year, to roughly 32,000 emails at present, all of our families, all of our staff, news media, elected officials, community leaders, and frankly, anyone who wants it. It's open for anyone who wants to subscribe. We put a lot of emphasis on visual storytelling, our videography work. We regularly are producing news stories, features, promos that are shared online, on social media, within the newsletter, and also on Channel 12, which is our presence on MediaCom. And of course, part of that is, and Kyle Nicely is right behind the wall behind you, running the board meeting broadcast, which is more, as Kyle will attest, is more than just showing up every other Tuesday night to push some buttons. It, it, it takes some time to, to make sure the rooms work in, to edit videos and get them online, et cetera. We do, we put a lot of stock in photography, not stock photography, but taking our own photos. We put a big emphasis on authentic, genuine photos by the, throughout the School District that we use in advertising, billboards, newsletters, brochures, websites, et cetera. Last year, we shared more than 6,600 photos on our Flickr page, which is our photo-sharing page, which received over 3 million views just on Flickr. Branding and graphic design is a major emphasis. We've produced and updated the Graphic Standards Manual for the District, which, while they're, with our staffing, we're not able to monitor and police that, as well as some organizations might do. To the credit of people throughout the District, they're paying attention, they're much more aware of the importance of that. And of course, Adam, our graphic designer, is involved in a range of things, logos, brochures, signage, vehicles, our food trucks that hopefully you've seen on the road, things like that. Media relations, we're the primary contact for the news media, of course, push out news releases, advisories, coordinate interview requests, work either with our own media events or work with our partners in arranging those. Marketing, I'll touch on a little more in a minute. We are the main point of contact with Strategic America, our marketing agency that we brought on about a year and a half ago. We do some in-house, small amount of in-house marketing. We, for several years, have had a digital billboard campaign throughout the city, eight spots around Des Moines, half for HR, job openings, and half for general district promotions. We do some advertising on DART, which is job and career-focused, and we're also a sponsor of Iowa Public Radio and have on-air sponsorships, promos for the district every other week. We're always trying to bring new toolbox, new tools to the toolbox. This year, it was our podcast. Somebody at the table said it is fast becoming America's most popular education podcast, and I'm not one to disagree with the applause in public. But it is a monthly feature. We've had six episodes out so far. We do a lot of support for special events. Revived the state of the schools last year, stadium grand opening, worked with the foundation on the one run and the, and the dinner. We're involved in our public affairs efforts. Amanda Lewis does a lot of work with CLAT, our Community Legislative Action Team, in supporting them, and we work regularly during the session with our lobbyists. We do a range of school supports for their communication needs. We provide support to talent and personnel with promoting job fairs, openings. We created the Becoming Here Spotlight this, this year to feature this, this year to feature employees of the month, and we do other duties as assigned per our job descriptions. Some priorities for the coming months, a successful State of the Schools event four weeks from today, 8:00 AM, Tuesday, February 13th. Hoover High School will be there, B-Square. You're all going to get an invitation that you can share with your friends, families, and contacts from me tomorrow. Marketing, we're actually going to shift some of our messaging later this spring to focus on the middle school transition, which is where we're seeing some losses in enrollment. Reimagine Education, the facilities planning effort, we've been working somewhat at, and we'll be working more as that process progresses. Honestly, that's going to be the biggest thing the school district may take on since the local option sales tax was passed 120 years ago. Everyday Matters, we're going to begin an internal awareness campaign around chronic absenteeism. Spoiler alert, you might hear a little bit more of that at the State of the Schools event. And lastly, and a couple of us have talked about this already, is a speakers bureau, setting up a more formal process for board members, district leaders to be out and about in the public, to present on the district. And I'm not sure where I'm at on time, my phone is turned off. But real quick, some areas of growth or maybe more apt, what keeps me up at night. One is a conversation about rightsizing communication staffing at the district. We're down one and a half people from where we were a little over two years ago. Doesn't sound like a lot, that's a 23% drop. We're one of the smallest communications departments within the Council of the Great City Schools, even when you take into account enrollment and look at it on a per capita level. Second, future marketing at DMPS. We are in the most competitive arena that we've ever been in as a school district, and just keeping in that front of mind. Doing more public media events, not to pat ourselves on the back, I think we do a good job at them when we do them. We need to find a way to do more. Increasing the bandwidth for our school supports, specifically focusing on enrollment and what we can do, you know, whether it's direct mail pieces, whether it's upgrading our own welcome center to make it more welcoming for families. And last but not least, we need to look at an update and overhaul the district's website. I think we have a good website, but it's seven years old, which is 107 years old in technology years. So it's just, it's, it's time for a new look and some improved functionality on that front.
Thanks, Phil.
And that is what I have.
Five people. I mean, that's, everybody is really thin on staffing, but that's, that's pretty thin.
We keep busy.
Thanks.
Bring it home, Jose.
All right. I promise I'll be under five minutes. I'm currently being kicked in the bladder by a fetus that's pointed downwards, so I'll go fast. So, hello, my name is Josie Sturgis. I am the Director of Assessment Data and Evaluation for Des Moines Public Schools. I just passed my one year. I started as the interim director just about a year ago. So you can see from the slide how our team is established. We do have kind of three branches of work within our department. We have our data team that reports up through our data team manager. We have our federal programs team with our federal programs coordinator, and then kind of parts of many of my other people, and then our assessment and evaluation team. So that's kind of our overall structure. I kind of stole a page out of Phil's book. And so the first two pages here are really just an overview of what our department does. Assessment data and evaluation is kind of a broad, vague-sounding topic, and so I wanted to give you guys a sense of this is what we do for the district. I'm not going to take you through them, but as you go through and if you refer back to this, this can give you an idea of what we do. I've broken into two pieces, kind of our general program work, and then the second one is our federal programs work. So my department, as the assessment data and evaluation department, provides essentially oversight for Titles 1, 2, and 4, and then additionally, support for ESSA compliance. We work really closely with business and finance with their work, and then also with schools and supporting the way that title functions across the district. Ooh, went too far. So some major initiatives and goals from this first semester and going into next semester. We are in the process of building a comprehensive, and continuing to build our comprehensive balanced assessment system. With that, we are returning to MAP for ninth and 10th grade students in both their, their literacy classes and then our Algebra I and Geometry classes this year, with the intent that next year, we will increase that to include those 11th grade classes. There were several reasons why we started with that, but we felt like that was a good place to get us started. It's been several years since we've had a high school second, a high school interim assessment, and so we wanted to hit the ground running with that throughout the year. We're also implementing our connected intelligence, our Data Lake solution. One of, with that is, as you've heard our different teammates talk about tonight, we have a lot of different data systems that we use in the depart, across the district. And a lot of times, they don't like to talk to each other, especially if they come from different companies. And so we, last year, went through a process where we identified, we originally had a data warehouse plan. We have since shifted to the Data Lake model with the connected intelligence system. And so we're in the process of implementing that and utilizing the data that we can get out of that and the ways that we can pull data together in that new system. We are, we do have a process in place for program evaluation for pilot programs across the district. You know, one of the things that we get asked is how do we know whether or not it worked? And so that's one of the key things that our program evaluators tackle is being on the front end and being able to build a design, and design an evaluation so that we have really clear answers at the end. What happened when we're trying different things? The other big thing for my team is, my team does a lot of work with our Tableau system. We have one of the most state-of-the-art data access through Tableau that a K-12 district has nationally. I go to other, I go to conferences, I go talk to other people, and I tell them about what kind of access our teachers have to data, and they just stare at me because it is, it is unheard of in a K-12 system. So it's a, but with the cyber event last year, we had to start over. So my team has been very, very hard at work over the course of the last year rebuilding that infrastructure. So those are kind of our major initiatives and goals in that, in that general program. The second side of my team, our federal programs work. We are working, or last summer, we worked, we started the implementation of a federal program steering committee. We have 2.25 Title-funded staff members at central office, and that's a lot of work for 2.25 people. And so we, we instituted a federal program steering committee to bring together across departments, people who have invested interest in, in what it is that title programming and federal programming does for that alignment purpose. Another big initiative, this is, that was rolled out this fall that is going to affect FY '25, is that we're actually changing our Title I model. In the past, up until this point, for the past six or seven years, we've used what's called a direct certification model for identifying low-income students for the purpose of identifying Title I schools. Starting in FY '25, we will be using our Home Economics Survey instead of direct certification to identify Title I eligible students in schools. What that does is make all but two of our schools eligible for Title I. At this point, we're about, we're at about between two-thirds and three-quarters. So it's, it's a major shift for our schools, but I think it, it really does bring a level of equity because the schools that we were serving with Title I aren't that different from the schools that we weren't. And so that's a major shift and a major initiative going through the, through the next, through the course of the spring and into next year. And then also, our Title II and Title IV, we're kind of changing the monitoring model for that. So, and engaging that federal program steering committee in that process. Two big areas of growth for my team. We are always process documenting, always. As you can tell, we're not a huge team. We've, either are 12, and each person on my team does a pretty singular job. And so one of the things that we are working hard on is making sure that every person on our team has someone that they work with closely and documenting the work that they do, and then subsequently having structures in place so that they, they have someone to work with and they have a partner in that, so that should anything happen, we have the ability to pick up and run. So that's, that's mine. I didn't type myself.
On to six. You got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, we're good, right? First of all, I want to give an apology both to my board colleagues and to everybody here because clearly, I did not time this very well. So a little bit of a rookie mistake by your new chair. What I want to make sure all of you know is how much we appreciate the work. And it's a lot to be asked to talk about what you do in seven minutes. And we really appreciate you trying to stay within that. And I, I hope what you hear from us is we are really interested in the work that you're doing and wanted to just provide an onboarding both for Patrick and Anna and also for newer board members like myself. We're still learning. So thank you. And thank you for your patience. And I just, I feel awful because I obviously kept everybody up a little bit too late tonight. So lesson learned on my part, but thank you very much for, for bearing with us. Really appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you. Nothing to say. Echo cheers, sentiments, tremendous gratitude. Thank you. Get out there, be warm, stay safe. Look forward to connecting with you all tomorrow. Thank you so much, team. I really, really, really appreciate you all. This was good. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our board members, we are going to conclude. Dr. Roberts and I are going to come up with a different plan. I think we're all tired and we want to have a really thoughtful conversation. And so it seems that 9:35 at night is probably not the time to do it. So bear with us. We're going to huddle and just find an appropriate way to work through some of the other topics that we need to cover.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Terry.
Did you touch her?
I did. Yeah.
Good night, everyone.